We're going to open the October 1st Selectments Meeting. And the first thing on our agenda is an appointment with Peter Hoffman. Would you like to come up?
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi. So would you like...
The background.
Yeah, would you like to explain to the ladies what...
Right.
Why you're here?
So, back... The issue is Cabela's has invited us to host one or more meetings at Cabela's. And I said, geez, that seems like a neat idea. The EDC, the Economic Development Committee. And so we accepted it. And then I said, in their conference room at the store. And I said, I wonder if it's legal. So I went to the Attorney General's office and they said, no problem. But you might want to check with ethics. So I checked with ethics. And ethics felt that there's a value to the conference room, even so it's free to us and properly free to the planet for those that get to use it. And the Subway sandwiches that they might present to us. So I would have to assign a value to that and then keep it under $50, which the either annual or aggregate limit to keep it legal. However, if the appointing authority, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen or ladies wanted to accept the gift of the value of the conference room, the value of the sandwiches or water or cookies that they might have there, then that would make it lawful. And I should inquire of both. As you know, the Planning Board considered it and approved it last week. And we would like you to approve that as well for the same reasons. The benefit to the town is this will give some visibility to the EDC and inversely to the store. And we don't intend to do this each and every weekend at we... meeting. But we do want to do it from time to time in the next meeting, October 25th, where at the request of Rich Gilbert, the general store manager, he wants to have a summit, which I think we all think is a good idea, of all Highland Common Stores general managers. So he will host... Well, the EDC will jointly host it with the Highland Common... No. The EDC will host it with Cabela's. And he expects or will invite the 25 general store managers to attend. And so that will be our motive for having that meeting then. So we'd like your approval if you concur to be able to hold meetings off-site or specifically for the moment at Cabela's.
Okay. Did you have any questions or...
No, I have no issues as long as it's not every week, you know, quarterly or whatever. Just, you know, I think it's important that...
I think...
I think probably most people are more comfortable coming here.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that they have that opportunity too.
I think, you know, it'll be...
But otherwise, I think it's good.
I'm guessing it'll be time to time, but...
Okay. Peg, did you have any questions?
Are we setting any sort of precedence by doing this for any other committee in town to go somewhere else and have meetings?
Well, I think that were you to approve it, it would be only fair to allow other boards and committees to do the same thing at other sites. I wouldn't want you to permit it just to us. So if either you approve it for us and others, or if somebody approaches you, I would think you'd approve it as well. I just, I don't see the downside. It's no cost to the town. It's good visibility for the town, good visibility for the committee and mix it up a little bit.
Maybe you could come back after a couple of meetings and let us know how it's going. Input, who's there, what you're talking about. I mean, I realize there'll be agendas in minutes, but would rather have... would rather hear from someone who's there.
Sure.
Because not all the comments are going to be captured in a meeting or in a minute.
You obviously haven't read her minutes. They're long, right, Mary?
I haven't seen them. I will... I'll check them out though.
All that hard work for nothing.
I'm sorry. Do you read mine?
Uh, huma, 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 huma.
Yeah.
So the...
Achoo!
The Planning Board made a motion to acknowledge that the Economic Development Committee is meeting off of town property and the meeting space and any refreshments are inconsequential in terms of monetary gain and is part of the Economic Development Committee's charge of their duties. I personally would agree with Lisa though, that I wouldn't want you to do it every meeting.
I understand.
I think, you know, it is good to have your own visibility here in town too. Well, not that that's not town, but in the building, I guess I mean.
Okay.
I'm okay as long as we get the opportunity to revisit that this isn't a blanket, yes.
Okay. So the motion would be for this time, at this time, that we would approve?
I mean, this is something we can always...
Revisit.
Retract and revisit.
Yeah.
I motion to approve this one.
Okay. Seconded.
Which... Which iteration, yours or yours?
It's...
She made a motion.
It would be the one... It's similar to the planning is my intention here.
Got it.
Okay.
If there are issues, we revisit. That's just what happens.
Okay. That's fine.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
I didn't read my minutes.
Yeah. Get right on that.
Do we have time? We have a whole slew of minutes that we could approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
All of them?
Yep.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I did have one thing, Mary. I think it was on 9/17, open session. I think Mr. Bradley's last name was misspelled.
Which Bradley? I got them wrong?
My brother.
Okay.
Steven.
Yep, okay.
So...
I will fix that before I post it.
All right. All right. And the Administrative Secretary requests to attend training workshops?
There's four of them. This tends to happen. They kind of get bottlenecked at the end of the... or in the fall.
Yeah. They do.
Actually, usually there's even one more, but I haven't seen the announcement for it yet about liquor licenses.
Okay.
But they're MMA and one is MIA on 111F, the Police and Fire Sickness and Accident, like managing those kind of accounts.
Mm-hmm.
One is for administrators. Another is the Legislative Fall Breakfast, just kind of to keep track of what's going on. And I don't remember the fourth off the top.
Let's say...
Although, actually, the fourth one was a capital planning one, which if you wanted to knock one off, but I kind of thought it'd be good to go to be exposed to it.
And these are all on Friday? One is on Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. So you would just mix it up as far as that week?
Covering that week, yeah.
Okay.
And now the town meeting warrant is done. There should be no further...
Yeah.
No further jockeying for time.
Right. So do I hear a motion? Would you like...
I just... I'd like to briefly discuss.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I am all for training, but I do want to make sure that when we're doing training, we recognize that the office is closed, there's more hours during the week, we're paying, you know, mileage and all of these other things. So I want to make sure that they are relevant trainings. One of the ones I read was the boot camp. And it says that's the boot camp for new or aspiring administrators is a nuts and bolts session. Boot camp was established primarily for new managers who were seeking help since they had just been appointed in the position.
I've already attended it once.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm saying is...
Let her finish.
It doesn't seem to be something that you do every year and it seems to be for new managers and, I mean, the description's right there.
Yep. You said most of that, but...
Yeah. So I'm not sure... I would love to see relevant trainings. I just am not sure that going again makes sense.
Have you gotten something out of that one in the past, Mary?
I did, yeah. I did.
Give me comments.
I think that was on a Friday too, so the office is otherwise not going to be closed. I mean, it wouldn't be like it's a fresh closure. The office is already closed on a Friday.
Right. It is. The one that's on a Thursday is the Police and Fire... Police and Fire Sickness.
I think that one's very relevant.
Yeah. So it would only be that one?
I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
I also, I'm happy to go to the Fall Legislative Breakfast.
I think, I think a lot of us do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, yeah. So I'm not sure there's... One of the board members or multiple board members could go to that one.
Okay. So your motion is... Or Peg, would you like to make a motion?
Uh-uh.
I move that we approve the Police and Fire Sickness and Accident Coverage Workshop and the UMass Collins Center Capital Planning Workshop.
Okay.
Just taking a note. Hang on. I'll second.
See, I mean, I don't really have a problem with any of them, but there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote. Aye, I guess, but I really don't have a problem with the other two. Okay. So...
So maybe going forward, before you sign up for classes, Mary, the three of us, four of us could just like sit and maybe divvy and see, talk about it ahead of time then at a meeting so we can really look into it.
Yeah.
See who'd get the biggest bang out of it.
Yeah. Because I really, like I said, I have no, no issue at all with relevant training. I just want to make sure that it is relevant when we're...
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, it's a little after 7:15. We are meeting now with, having the Earthworks Board Public Hearing for Christopher Slade. Would you like to come up? And we will pause the regular meeting and open the Earthworks Hearing.
Thank you.
Green cards and tear sheets. All right. Basically, what I'm working on is the same project that, let's see, two hearings with the Board of Health so far, into our third one with the Planning Board, and I think and as well as the town meeting presentation, the Housing for the Elderly Project up here on Highland Street. And as with any other project, you're going to need some fill going around buildings, grading roads and the rest. And I'm just complying with your Earthworks bylaw, getting a permit from the Selectmen. I originally, one of my first letters to my butters, along with a notice for one of the Planning Board hearings, was I stated that any fill I used would be coming from a local source and virgin, and that I would not be using any material from these DEP-regulated sites that you see going into the Clinton landfill and other places. Although supposedly that is all clean or slightly contaminated below acceptable limits, there's always carelessness on the job site or whatever, and there is a risk involved. Also, DEP keeps track of where all that material's getting dumped. So if you bring it onto your property and accept it, in the future, anyone who might be looking at your property to purchase or anything else, it's right there on the website, this received DEP-regulated material. So you may be forced to get into another round of testing to make sure it is clean. And I don't want to open the door to that. So basically, all the material that we bring will be local. We've been offered some material that you, most of you may be aware of. It's right across from the entrance to Lowe's down here on Coolidge Street. They're grading off an area. It's obviously virgin material. And we've been offered some of that. And the rest will probably come from the pit that I've been operating in Bolton for the last 40 years behind Bolton Orchards. And a good slug of that is already in Berlin via myself, Mr. Sawyer, Mr. Wheeler, et cetera. So I don't think... I realize the purpose of your bylaw, I think, is to protect your town from becoming a dumping site for questionable material. I fully support it and I'm not going to be involved with it whatsoever. Trucking will probably be by most of, your local contractors that do some trucking, Larry Sawyer, Paul Wheeler and the rest. Nine out of 10, I can't see how I would ever want to bring material unless it came on 62 from Hudson in this next case, or perhaps from Clinton Sterling area, there are some pits, sources of virgin material, or from Bolton down Highland Street. So those are the only streets we'd be using.
So say that again, you'd pull...
The only way I could get to that site is either down Highland Street from Bolton...
Right.
Or off your state highway and up Highland Street.
Okay.
I know of no sources that'd be on any of your back roads beating them up or endangering bridges or anything else.
Okay.
So that's, that's pretty much the crust of it.
All right. And you have filled out the application?
Yep.
Which you have?
Mary has the application, the check, the green cards and the tear sheet.
It's there.
Okay. Just skimmed over the, the Earth Removal and Import Bylaw. And it includes an accurate description of the earth to be imported. The purpose for a removal or importation was...
Just to build the project. We just need material to grade the roads and around the buildings. Any of you know the property up there, we're... I think we're going to make out fine with it, but it is a challenging site, the amount of shot rock of ledge and steep grades. But I think we can work with them and not end up fighting it. But you have a choice. Blast the ledge down or bring some fill up.
Right.
Well, we'd rather bring the fill up to make it acceptable grades around the buildings and streets.
Okay. And does the board have any questions?
Can I ask if Joe has anything to add?
I haven't seen any of the documentation for it, so I'd rather not speak out of turn.
Okay.
Can we have him briefly take a look, just as long as he's here?
It took a little... What's that? Take a look at...
At the documentation. You just handed the documentation, right? This is it right here or...
No, that's not it. It's right there.
Or do we have it? Oh, okay.
Are you going to have enough truly ample time to look at the docs or... Because I don't want to rush you. I just don't want you to do like one of those.
Yeah. I thought I'd do it in the next five minutes if that's what you're looking for. I'm thinking we'll have to look through it accurately and give you a, you know, prompt decision.
Sorry. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. This is one of those areas where it's nice to have a more expert opinion, so...
Didn't know all this was in here. Go on.
So do we give a contingent yes until Joe has the time to look through it?
Um...
Or wait?
Well, I'm just going to delay it. I'm guessing he's going to peek through. It's going to take 10, 15 minutes if that... Are you... Do you mind if he looks through those quickly and we go through some other stuff?
No, no, I don't mind.
Okay.
We're already... The process is a little bit slow and we're already into this, we're a little over a month.
Okay.
We would like to get going with winter coming on.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not concerned. I just would like to have somebody who knows more about this than I do take a quick peek.
So what was the, the hours of the transportation? I know we discussed this previously.
I think I put down seven to five.
Okay. It probably is there.
Regular working hours.
Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And the permits issued would be for no more than one year?
Does this go by a lot of residential on Highland or... I'm just wondering. I know in the past we've asked that it be started at eight, just so that everybody's sort of out.
I know. I looked at Highland Street as being an ex-county road that probably had commercial transportation on it 24 hours a day. We don't plan to bring in a whole herd of trucks. Most of the time, it's one or two trucks just feeding in along over the next five years as we build this out.
Okay.
So I think we'll sort of blend in with everybody else.
So it's not going to be all at one time and...
No, no.
Okay. All right. Well, that helps.
We also have a different way of doing things in that we ask our truckers to stay out of the coffee shops and political discussions on the jobs, drive safely but work steadily. People you had a problem with a while ago, bringing stuff down from Worcester, their supervisors don't want to have to try to keep track of them. So they're given a load count. And I don't know what it was on this jo... On that job, but it's typical. Six for eight. And if you can do six loads in six hours, more power to you, buddy. But it's your ticket. If it takes you nine hours, tough luck.
Chris, can I ask you a quick question? So you said, you go, over the next five years, you're going to bring in the 12,000 cubic yards?
Probably. Well, it's a... It's 66 units.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't plan to try to build them all out at once. It may be less. But I want to be honest, it could be a six-year, a five-year build out.
Okay.
Doing, you know, 10 units a year, 10 units a year.
And all of your soils are going to come from the same location?
No.
No.
I'm not going to promise you that. And they say I've got the material in Hudson right on across there that I'd like to utilize. Most of it, my fallback position will be the pit in Bolton that I've always used. If other material were to come available that I was sure was virgin material in the area, I might like to utilize it also.
Okay. And do you know plus and minus which site is going to be produced the most?
I don't at this point. Bolton would be my fallback. That's where I can always go.
Okay.
But it's a longer haul and I have to pay for it. So depending on what's going on, I mean, this thing right across some Lowe's I didn't know anything about until a month ago and they say, yeah, if you want several thousand yards, we'll bring it to you because we got to get it out of our way. Well, it doesn't get any better than that.
Right.
So naturally, I'd like to defray the expense of trucking material from Bolton.
All right. So we just have to keep an accurate record of where it's coming from and...
Yeah. No, I'd be happy to notify whoever would like to be notified of when, you know, when we're... What sources we're using. A telephone call is easy enough to say, we're going to be bringing some material in from here or there and you can follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's keeping his word. That should be virgin material over there. Wait a minute, where's it coming from? And check it out.
All right. You guys are able to produce slips and everything like that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
How many cubic yards are we talking about?
12,000.
Okay.
Cubic yards, plus and minus.
Which isn't very much over five years.
No. That's why I was curious about how much was coming in over the time, so what kind of is...
Now, would that mean that he would have to renew the...
Every year. He'd have to renew every year.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, what's the max weight on these trucks versus what our roads are rated for? I would think that...
I don't... It's a pretty heavy loads. It's all tied up by the state. I don't know the ratings of your roads. The 10-wheelers are certified and registered at 73,000 pounds. Dump trailers can run as much as 99 low. That site, we might use trailers occasionally, but that site doesn't lend itself to trailers very well. The triaxle trucks, they give them a little bit extra to 76,000, which is what you see most commonly now. Two of us country bumpkins are still running the three axle trucks, so they're more maneuverable. Most of the trucks now that are being produced have the three axles under the back of them, so-called triaxes, which distributes. And the state likes it very much because it does distribute the weight better.
So is that something that... I don't know much about it. I know nothing about it. Is that something we should worry about from a road standpoint?
Not what...
No.
It's been this way for the last 40 years. The trucks you see every day going in and out of town, if it's got dirt on it, it's going to be in that capacity. So I don't think we'll be hurting the roads any more than all the other trucks going in and out of town or around town.
Joe, my senses, you're pretty comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion to approve the permit?
Motion to approve the permit.
Seconded. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Is there any other questions from the public? All righty. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much for your speedy decision. It helps to leave me. Thank you, Joe, for going along with it.
All right.
And it goes without saying that if you see any of our little wagons misbehaving on the road, come see me or if you're pleased, you see the one.
We'll hear.
There's no need, there's no need of it, so I'd prefer to get the call first, but that's your option.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we are going to meet with the assessors. Come on down. What's that?
Just go back to the board sometime for the Earthworks.
Yes. Yep. We're closing the Earthworks Hearing and going back to the Selectments Meeting.
We mean the Earthworks Board can't decide on the split?
No. Change your hat.
Different mask. And reopen this hearing.
What?
And reopen this hearing.
And reopen this hearing. I'm sorry. I'll leave my hat on. That's because you only need to wear one. Oh, jeez.
Mostly gone.
So you're asking me to find out about splitting up all the way to 150%. The, I guess the only drawback is if the commercial properties lose value, then that is going to shift all the way back over to residential. So that makes... And there's no more room. I mean, if you shift all to way to 150, it's just going to come back on the residential till it evens back out, till either the residential's drop and the commercial rises. But I did do an example of if, if the values stayed the same...
Which is what happened this year, correct? For the commercials?
No. I'm talking about residential.
Oh, it's the residential, okay.
So if residential value stayed the same and the money that was passed at town meeting, this is what the taxes would look like. So, so basically what I wanted you to see is that if, if the split was still at thirty-eight percent and the average value at three ninety-five, and we spent the money that we did at FY nineteen values, the residential rate would be going up six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And then this is a little different from last week, but our, our values have been set, have been approved, and our growth has been approved. So the values would only change by pennies when we go to, to balance out the recap sheet. So this is within penny, five or six cents of what the tax rate's going to be. So, but you're not voting on the tax rate, you're voting on the split. So you can do that tonight, and then we can fill in the numbers and get...
I did pull just a few numbers for you guys to look at, just to, um, there's Hudson, Marlboro, Southborough, Northborough, the tax bills, and, um, Northborough and Southborough do not do, um, splits.
Okay.
Which is why those are so much higher. But I wanted you to see where Hudson and Marlboro were since they directly about us.
So thirty-five eighteen?
Is the commercial.
And that's based on FY eighteen? Right, because they haven't set their FY nineteen.
Right, most likely, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they don't set it till the fall.
And those are the, the entire tax bills, average tax bills. But there's a couple, I mean, they have a much higher population, so they split over a much broader, we're so small.
I looked over the parcel count, especially in single-family. We only had like seven eighty-seven, and they all have twelve, one thousand, two hundred and higher. So it gets split out way different because there's more of a base.
Yeah.
Just...
We can't, we don't have economies of scale, which is why every little thing we do has such a disproportionate effect.
So if you're looking at the, with the average assessment being at four eighteen-nine, the taxes would be going up seven oh six. So based on those economy of scales, that's basically keeping the residential at the same, it's six seventy-nine to seven oh six. Just, if you understand what I'm wabbling about. It makes very much sense up here. Sometimes it doesn't exit out that way.
Molly, what's the impact of Sears' gross plus with all the articles in the paper about it?
I can tell you that because I was just, the board just asked me that. So Sears' FY nineteen value is at eight point six nine nine eight hundred, so like eight point seven. So if, for FY nineteen, if at the thirty-eight percent split, its tax liability would be two seventeen, two hundred and seventeen thousand. So you'd lose eight point seven off of the value, and you'd lose two hundred and sixteen dollars worth of taxes. Well, you probably wouldn't, the physical property is still going to be there, but it's not going to be as worth as much.
So then that shift would have to go to the other commercials or to the residents?
Some of that shift would get amongst themselves, and then some of it would, would shift over to residential because you're dropping the percentage, that would drop the percentage of the commercial.
And when do, when does the hotel, do you think hit? Did he leave?
He, he, I talked to Matt, he said December.
So they, I thought it was in this...
Like two months from now?
The taxes?
No, no, no. When she asked when the hotel would be complete.
First, first stage, December. I don't know, I can't, I can't say if that's accurate.
For FY twenty, it would be a hundred percent complete. But with the, you also just have to pay attention to the commercial that's in town is basically the two malls.
Oh, I know.
So I don't expect those values to increase a lot. It's going, the values are going to go up because they're building out, but their market value, I guess, or their, their, is not, is going to stay flat for a while, I would think, because malls are not that, the most exciting real estate investment for investors. I don't know if Highland Common might be a little bit different than Solomon Paul because pawned.
We got you. We got you.
Because that's a mall mall, and there's, I don't, people don't know what's going to happen with malls. They aren't the destination that they used to be. Kevin wants to talk.
So the discussion came up of the empty buildings. So I'm on the avenue that I see it, it's worth something, we should tax them for it. I mean, somewhat corrected, and it's not really worth much being empty because there's no income. I have a little problem with that, but I'll get over it. I'll get over it. So you just can't say, well, it's there, we're going to raise your taxes, you know, two hundred thousand, even though there's a building there.
Nothing, nothing to lose.
Right.
Some value, doesn't it?
But it's more on income and expenses in commercial property. So we had that discussion before we came down.
Do you know if there's any plans for those spots to be filled?
I'm sure they know.
I don't know, I'm sure. Yeah.
Well, I know, but I didn't know if you had heard anything of, well, maybe that's a you question.
Which, which property? Town Commons or Solomon?
Solomon.
So Solomon's continually trying, uh, trying to replace tenants, and they seem to be actively accomplishing that. I think the bigger concern is not the small tenants, but the big, big ones.
Your anchors.
I think, if I were a betting man, I'd say that it'll be a dip in rev, severe dip in revenue when, when these properties close and they'll be repurposed, and there'll be similar revenue to what there was before the slowing revenue numbers. So I think, you know, this is just my extrapolation of the not from the input that they've given us, is I think, you know, a number of months to a year or two, some, something will happen. It doesn't take a rocket scientist or an economist to read the same thing that we all read.
What about Highland? Anything, the empty storefronts, when you're, the first row that you scooped up?
Yeah, I, I think they're on the upswing. They're almost a hundred percent built out, almost. I think they're eighty-five or ninety percent occupied. I think, I think we can depend on them certainly for five or ten years, because I think the leases will be five or ten years out. Now, could some entities close shop and continue to pay and be dark? Yes, but it's not my impression that Highland is an issue to worry about, but I think Solomon's a big one. They, they were supposed to attend our last meeting and politely canceled, so, and I've not been able to get Macy's, JCPenney, or Sears to come in, a representative there as the store manager, for any amount of money. Is that what you say much or not?
What is your feeling about doing a split that puts us at about the same rate as Marlboro?
Marlboro, Marlboro's commercial rate or Marlboro's...
Marlboro's commercial rate.
What's Marlboro's commercial?
Marlboro's commercial rate is twenty-five seventy-three.
Like forty-five?
Yeah. Because that makes it so that somebody wouldn't necessarily go over on the Marlboro side because of her tax rate. You know, Hudson's like way, way higher than us for commercial.
And the average tax bill would be, what, five thirty?
It would.
Increase.
Increase, yeah.
Five thirty increase.
There's no, I mean, it's, it's going up no matter what we do.
That's right.
I'm just trying to come up with some sort of reasonable logic to what we're doing.
I almost think that it would be a better pill to swallow for the town of Berlin to say, you know, we're going to go with the forty-five percent shift, so your taxes are going up by five hundred and thirty, but keep in mind Sears may go out, other businesses may go out, trying to actively get in. Prepare yourself. You know, we're, we may not be able to keep it at this rate rather than just, hi, open your mail, here's your new tax bill.
You won't be going to dump either.
None of us will.
Should I mention this now?
No, I won't be going to the dump. I'll be throwing it in Chris's car when she picks it up.
Oh, good. If it stopped by on the way.
Truthfully... You know, just, just to note, the average tax bill in Hudson is six thousand one hundred and fourteen.
Residential?
Residential. The average tax bill in Marlboro is a little lower, but, you know...
Bigger base.
Bigger base, five thousand seventy-five. If you live in Southborough or Northborough where they don't split, your tax bill, average tax bill is nine thousand six hundred and thirty-two. Northborough, it's seven thousand three hundred and forty.
Or Bolton.
Um, I don't have Bolton. I can find Bolton quickly.
There was a closer to art, I doubt.
I bet it's higher. They don't have any commercial base.
I could, I want to say it was very much higher than ours last time I walked.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think that's a good strategy, Lisa.
Well, I researched my butt off to try to come up with something that made sense. And that's, that's the best I came up with. Oh, that's a good case.
And then I did up a little, um, what were you going to say, Kevin?
I agree with Lisa. If you look at this example, Molly kept everything like flat, level funded, and...
No, 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 I kept the values flat.
Okay. Right. We had to, with everything that the town agreed upon at town meeting, we would expect our taxes to go up to, up six hundred and nine, uh, seventy-nine dollars, so seven hundred dollars, because that, if there was no increase in the value in housing or commercial. So I thought that was a good example. Because you raise your hand at town meeting, you expect to pay seven hundred dollars more. So on that split, we're pretty close at the forty-five is five thirty. So I think that's a good idea.
And I didn't know if you'd like to see this, but I did a little example of CPA for this year, but it won't come into effect from that next year. So if the average assessment is four eighteen-nine, and you take a hundred thousand off for the exemption, your CPA tax is going to be based on three eighteen-nine, and I estimated the tax at the thirty-eight percent because I didn't know that you were going to go with the forty-five. So the taxes would be four CPA, the tax dollars would be four nine, three oh nineteen. So your CPA at three percent would be one forty-nine, so ninety-one. So that's going to be a hundred, what, basically a hundred and fifty dollar, a hundred and, did I say that right? A hundred and fifty dollars more.
Add it on.
Add it on.
Coming.
FY twenty, so...
Do you remember if that equals what Buzz said that it would be?
I don't know what Buzz said it would be.
I don't have the stuff with me, but I'm, I'm pretty sure he worked the math with Molly, so...
Yeah, it, it...
Well, yeah, and then he's supposed to start higher on the rate.
Right.
But at the, at that time...
Yeah, because I gave him all the, the values.
The math would have been done with three ninety-five, so it's in the ballpark, but when the assessments fall up, you're just going to have a, I mean, it affects everything.
If the rate changes, it affects everything too, because...
And the main difference too, I would argue from a CPA standpoint, that you're still probably going to raise your hand for the stuff at town meeting, so it's better to do it this way than the other way.
So when you're at the dump, you can break the news to them gently.
Yeah, I'm standing very in the backyard.
If I just did it out at the...
Have my own stinky farm.
Forty-five percent shift tax rate, and it would be a hundred and forty-three, it's still close to the one fifty.
So Bolton, I can't find the dollar amount, but their tax rate is twenty sixty-six per thousand, so their tax rate per tax bill has to be, I'm guessing significantly higher than ours. Okay, so...
Ready to vote?
We're researching, yep.
Can I just read you through these?
Yep.
A residential, uh, open space discount, no. Correct. Your vote is no?
Yes.
Right. Well, do you, do you want to make the motion? Open space, no.
Yes.
And you're going to second it?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And the residential exemption adopted, we did, we're mostly residential occupied until the commer, until apartments come in, then I don't know if it's going to make a difference then, but as of now, we didn't, I didn't, we didn't do that. So if you want to make a motion to adopt a resi, to not adopt a residential exemption...
Motion to not adopt a residential exemption.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I did give you the scenario for a small commercial exemption to be adopted at ten percent. So those were in, that was included in your numbers.
And that's what we typically do, correct?
Yes, that's what you've done for the last.
Motion to do the small commercial exemption at ten percent.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then...
Where's that at?
I lost it. So the residential factor is going to be eighty-four point seven seven, which equals a forty-five percent shift in the taxes.
Motion to approve the forty-five percent shift.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question first? So that's the five thirty, Molly? Five thirty twelve?
Yeah.
Okay. Aye.
Projected, well, that's all.
Ish.
Ish. Yes.
Ish. Yes. Aye-ish.
Yes. And the excess levy capacity for the current fiscal year would be one point oh three nine five three six nine eight. And for the prior fiscal year, it was at one point six two five eight forty-one. Not sure what that's, so you're, you're not... I don't know how to explain that.
That's the amount of money that you could have taxed and raised.
And didn't.
Right.
So what was the prior year? One point...
Point six.
And current?
One, one oh three nine five three six.
Oh, God. Too many numbers. All right.
I can actually do copies.
Well, yeah, one point oh four, we'll round up.
Yeah.
That's our excess levy capacity. We could have taxed up to...
Right, so you could have, you could have spent a million dollars more, and then the taxes would go up even more, so... And then if I can just have you, I put in the figure on the front, because I can't do it, but they want the paper signed, so I can do it.
So I guess that you...
It's like...
I guess I should ask. I didn't see any hands waving. Does anybody have any questions?
Molly, last year didn't the tariffs go down?
Yes.
So we have to keep that in mind, too, that last year's tax dollars went down to the normal tax bill. So this year's...
Oh, all three?
Yeah. This is wide open space.
Technically, last year's increased plus this year's spending. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because you, you made the tax rate a little bit lower last year for the hit for the prior year, so now it's basically...
Evening.
Evening out, it should be, ish. I like the ish.
Ish. Ish. I'll remind Officer Goody about it, he pulls me over for speeding and say, I was doing thirty-ish.
When do you expect the hotel to be done?
Finished?
Yeah.
The hotel, um, they're running behind. It was supposed to be done in September, so I would say probably by November first.
Oh, okay. It doesn't look like...
Do you need to copy this, Mary?
Yes.
Let me just, I'll write up real quick and take a picture. I would give you the whole pack.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Those part things, it's kind of, the painful part comes later.
You can pick my trash.
Going to start a new business, getting everybody's trash up.
Just don't have to all buy a dumpster and all...
Yep.
We're all going to live together in one property. Pitch a tent, pitch a tent up on Forty Lyman, come on up, got enough.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Appreciate that.
I know.
You can come by any time. We're here.
We could just have tea or coffee.
Every Monday.
That's right, we're here on Mondays.
I totally need your coffee.
Okay. We have a seven forty-five appointment with the treasurer regarding an insurance advisory committee, a request. Come on down.
Hello?
How we doing?
Okay.
We had our first meeting with the IAC this past month, and kind of concluded that it may make sense where the cost of benefits is in the million-dollar ballpark now, to have a professional come in and analyze the benefits that we're offering. Both the finance committee and the selectmen requested that the cost be contained. What that means would be what we come up with as a final solution. We are getting to the point where it will begin passing the schools, which have always kind of gone neck and neck as, as a percentage of the budget. And we have a quote from Cooking Company who had no prejudice, they don't favor any insurance company, and they want between six and nine thousand dollars to do the study. So you could do a similar thing by asking someone to come in and quote a package, but this would eliminate any favoritism or lowballing. You know, a lot of them come in the first year, and then the rates go way up. We're trending a little bit high right now on the usage of the plan, but... but probably will still be in the mid-range as far as the increases that Maya will have next year. So it's a good thing. It's just where are the funds coming?
Exactly.
That's my question.
I'm joining the long list.
I might be remembering this wrong, but wasn't there somebody who would do this and look at the different insurance companies for next to nothing? Am I, am I not remembering that correctly?
It's usually an insurance agent that wants the business. I talk to them all the time and.
I'm trying to remember, I think, I'm not sure if Tom Galvin, I'll check, I'll see if I can find.
Okay.
Figure out where.
So I guess then that is the next question about where would the money come from?
Right. You know, in the beginning, I could probably squeeze it into the treasurer's budget. But as we get towards the end of the year, it usually catches up with you.
Well, I'm sure what the finance committee will recommend is that you do maybe perhaps use your budget and then as you get closer.
To reserve or transfers at the end. And I do have other accounts that could take care of that at the end of the year when you're in that two-month wash or three-month wash.
When we have to move things from one item, line item to another. Yeah. That might be the best way to go.
Do you want to wait though until Lisa can check with Tom to see where, if somebody was coming in to do it for next to nothing or?
I just, I'm having trouble remembering. I thought somebody had brought in a proposal of some sort. This question back there?
Is, is the chairman of the Insurance Advisory Commission would like to address some of those things because I have some of that paperwork from the companies that have solicited, so.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the information that Lisa may be looking for?
Maybe. David Gouling, I've never met you, Lisa.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Been here 25 years, but I haven't met you.
Sorry.
Hi. Dennis is correct, and the meeting we met was very informal because Maya was there for a presentation as you were at also. For 17 years, have you dealt with Maya?
No, it hasn't been that long.
No, I don't think so.
No.
No.
So.
I spoke with Judy Boomen and it was 2000-something, but I don't, I don't know if it was 2009.
It's been more than 13 or 14 years.
Yeah.
So. And this all came to head when the town at one time was paying insurance to multiple agencies. And Dennis, with some incentive and a few other things, we noticed some cost changing, reached out and combined, and there was a big reduction when they did go to Maya. We were spending money without asking questions. And the police department noticed some increases and decreases and said, why aren't we shopping around? And we did, I think, 100 and something thousand dollars you saved. And we asked that money to go back to help some dental benefits that we lost. So it worked out good. So let's say 12 years or 13 years. And those last 12 to 13 years, as I asked in the meeting, we've never put out any RFPs or bid out to any other agencies that I know of to find out what's out there.
No, Judy could not remember that they had done it, you know, for quite a while.
Right, and I checked with PEG and a few others, there's nothing, you know, former secretary, there's nothing. And, and I asked in that meeting too, and all fairness to Dennis, the wonderful jobs of treasurer has no insurance training from the town of Berlin and a commodity that changes volatively every day. And we should be getting our best rates for the citizens and the employees. So there was a couple of companies, last year we received a letter, the board did, from NFP.
Maybe this is.
This is one of them, and we've reached out to police union, the teachers have too. It says, I hope this letter finds you, blah, blah. As you know, employee health benefits, as we know, providing employees and retirees with the greatest excellent healthcare insurance at a price affordable to the community remains one of the greatest challenges of our times. As one of the largest broker advisors to mass cities and towns, they have over 80 clients. The list is growing, and the fourth largest employee benefits advisor in the US, NFP is uniquely positioned to help your employees with health plan costs. We would like to make this cost-free, no obligation offer to assist you with your employee health plan renewal and achieve the most cost-effective pricing available. I got to say, as an employee, I was like, somebody's coming here to offer this for free to look at what Maya sells us with no competition. And we didn't, the board didn't at that time take that up. So as an employee from the Insurance Advisory Commission, I guess we're a little disheartened that we may have lost some money that could have helped both the town and the taxpayers, and we should be looking at that. Chapter 32B, Section 3, IAC clearly states that we need to look at other agencies and possibilities and send it out to find out what's the best price for us. And right now, Maya comes into us, tells us the rates with no competition, and we accept it. I mean, there's some give and take, Dennis fine-tuned some things and we look at it. But basically, as you saw at that meeting, you attended their one-person show, and we're accepting it and writing the check. So I reached out to other communities that are both Maya or not Maya and find out they belong to other agencies. Well, first I suggested it would be in the best interest to hire a professional consultant. We don't have an HR person here, we don't have somebody that's trained in insurance. I have no idea what it is, I just can read that. And look at what's the best package that we're getting. And maybe it will be Maya, as you said, when you were on the school committee. And maybe it won't be, based on changes in personnel and cost. So I talked to bordering communities, town of Clinton uses the Minuteman Health Group. They're in there, Bolton, Lancaster, and a few others. And the difference in theirs is they have a member like Dennis that sits on the board and votes, where Maya doesn't. We don't sit on the board, we just take the rate and accept it. They have a voting member there to look at things. I looked at cities of Marlboro, they have full-time HR people, staff, much bigger than us as you were talking about in tax rates, and they don't even dabble in this because they can't keep on the training. They reach out and they said, well, who's your broker? I said, we don't have one. We just take it from Maya. Well, who are you using for this? We don't have one. And they said, we even hire one. The town of Clinton brings in someone, not every year, because it's not cost-effective. But when there's a change, even though they're happy with the company they have, every two or three years, they bring in a consultant to make sure that that agency, similar to Maya, is on board, and they have found some discrepancies in savings here and there. They use Maya for liability vehicles and other things, but not health insurance. Nor does Bolton or Lancaster. So there must be a reason, and I can't say good, bad, or different, because I'm not an expert, nor is anyone on the payroll in the town of Berlin for that. So I think the town should really look at first, coming up with an RFP, sending it out. There's multiple agencies out there, the teachers' unions expressed at the meeting that they would reach out to their people. We will reach out to the police union, and I want to take the word "union" out of it, and I always say that, employees. There's multiple people out there that do this for a living. And I think it would be the best interest to look at what is the best package for the town of Berlin.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to get an argument from us.
And Maya suggested, they said, we work with consultants all the time. They brought that up, and they said, we even have some we can recommend. And I cautiously said, well, maybe we should get our own.
Well, we want, we do want to find someone who is impartial. I don't know NRP, you know, I don't know.
That was received at the selectman's office, and we got one, the teachers got one, a couple of other agencies.
I mean, do they sell insurance also, or are they just a consultant?
No, they're just a consultant, okay? And they're looking to, you know, they're not, so there is agencies that sell insurance and independents. I mean, it's going to cost money.
Yeah.
You know, but you could hire another $90,000 employee and they couldn't understand insurance industry, it's not what they do. You know, an HR person's not going to make that decision right away. It's, who can we get the best information for?
Right.
The taxpayers and the employees.
When's open enrollment?
Hi, April, May.
So we have time?
No. We really have been asked to get this done by December because with the schools leaving our health insurance plan, the problem that Mr. Conroy has is he has to consolidate the three locations. And if we are going to make changes to our plan, the new version would be used to compare to the plan he's trying to build for the region. He's pulling together things like Boylston only pays 63%, where we're paying 70, something like that, 75%. They have retiree insurance over there, we don't. And we have a rich plan, that's the problem. And we know how to cut the costs down, it's just make it less rich. So no matter what you consult, whatever consultant you have, we're going to have to decide, do we want to have a worse plan, the same plan? Maya's the second largest buying group in the state, next to the GIC. They have about 148, you were there, cities and towns. They cut the pool off at 75,000. That would have to be in the spec. So it doesn't matter who you're going to pick, as long as they're independent and they're not trying to lowball, which is fairly common.
And that could happen, and then the next year you'd be in trouble.
Way up. And we went through that with the three when I first came here, 14, 15%, 16% one-time increases. So part of what we've been enjoying is 5%, 6% on average, which is pretty good. But with the increase in the number of employees, even with the teachers going, with hiring new policemen possibly for when the apartments go in, I talked to the chief today, we're going to have up to six firemen full-time pretty soon. So it's still going to be inexpensive.
Right, but you have to have it be, you know, the ability to have it be what it should be rather than expensive.
Right.
I don't know how to say that, but.
So I think I'm sensing that the insurance advisory would like a consultant of some sort. Is NRP, this is from last year, this is not an option?
I, I don't know, it's not.
This is, this is one of two companies that were recommended, they're independent. They.
And those are recommended by?
Well, the people at Maya know in the business. You know, one of the decisions you have to make is, do you want to get rid of Blue Cross? It's not in the GIC. They tend to have a quality program.
Well, I.
The statement of how it has to be done, first of all, at the last meeting, we weren't aware, we're going to talk about it tonight, but we wanted to see consultants brought in before the next meeting on the 23rd. We should hear from several of them, you know.
Well, do you want to reach out to?
We can, but I don't have the hiring ability of reaching out.
No.
That's, that's, that's the direction you would, I hope, as leaders of the town, fiscally responsible, would instruct Dennis to get as many possible agencies as there is to present something to us.
At any other cost, you might have to seek out three quotes anyhow.
Correct. And from an employee's point, I don't know if Dennis takes the benefits or not, I don't believe so. But the employees would argue that it's not a rich program on certain things. So that's perspective, so we don't call it a rich. Tufts is a program in Marlboro, Lancaster, it changes around, and it can be, you know, however it's done. As far as timing, we're not, I don't feel you're under pressure of what the school district has to do. You're providing benefits to the town of Berlin employees. They're going to assess that onto their school budget. So as an employee and for the IAC for Berlin, I'm not concerned what the regional district has to do under their planning. My concern is, how is the town of Berlin going to benefit their employees?
That too, but I think we were also thinking that there would be budget season coming along. And are we going to put in numbers for which plan? And that's why we were thinking December would be a good time period, but, you know, it may not happen.
If you understand how things work.
Yeah.
It's going to come back to the town anyhow as a line item.
Yeah.
We get assessed, so it does matter what they come up with as a plan.
No, no, I'm talking about just for Berlin, though.
Right.
Right.
But it's not just for Berlin.
Right.
It's going to be factored into what they eventually offer over there, and it's just going to come back.
Well, that all has to be negotiated, though, so.
And that could change, there could be a special town meeting that pulls out the district in May. We don't know that, you know, but we shouldn't wait on our benefit savings or cost increases at looking the best possible. Basically, what I'm saying is, no one here is an expert in this field. There is experts, some have offered to do it for free, some will do it for commission, save a consulting. Isn't it in the best interest of the taxpayers, as we just talked about taxes, to look at what's out there? And it may benefit us with a better plan, and I want to use the word "rich", it may benefit the employees.
Well, the rich is coming from the federal government, not from Dennis and not from us.
Can I make a motion that we pursue looking for a consultant?
Do you want to put out an RFP?
Is that, are we at the?
Request for proposal?
I know, are we at the monetary level that we need to put out a formal RFP?
Or do we just want people to come in and talk to us?
What's the level, Mary?
10,000 would be written, three written quotes. 50,000 is RFP. I just sent you all the link to Westford, just did an RFP for a health consultant.
So maybe we can just look for.
You said you were thinking 6,000 to 9,000, correct?
Well, that's a quote we have from one of the companies.
So we are probably under the 10, but right very close to it.
Yeah.
So maybe we should look for three written quotes since we are very close to the.
That's, I mean, you have a zero and you have the figure from the Maya people. I would like to think they'd reach out to independent consultants that aren't associated with Maya.
Right.
As we said in the original meeting.
And it doesn't have to be only three. Clients are constantly coming back saying, too high, go shop. Eh, too high, go shop, what if we, so, I mean, when you're talking large corporations that are doing this, 100,000 lives, active lives, Berlin is what?
2530 when it's global.
So, but still, if you're doing it for, you should, just like for this, for the new fire, for the new fire guy. Yeah, we need to do it to the, for the town, to say that we're looking around and we are being fiscally responsible.
Right.
Yeah.
And can I request that one of them is NRP, since they did reach out to us last year and see where they are this year?
So your motion is?
To pursue a consultant, coming back with at least three written quotes.
Seconded.
In talking to other towns that have done this, Maya's come back with a better rate once they realized you were actually shopping and looking. And this, in our last meeting last year, and as I explained to the teachers rep, it was like a poker game. They didn't want to show the figures because they thought we had other people in the audience that were bidding. And when they realized they weren't, they showed the figures, so they're, they're salespeople.
They didn't meet last year.
The year before, where they said, and they didn't want to hold their rates. And, and this year, you know, we've got a few more citizens in town that are in that industry are familiar, have come in and will be coming to the next meeting that I've reached out to. They don't want to serve on boards, but they're in the industry, and they took some copies from the last meeting, have fed me some information. So that's how I've found out about the other towns, so.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
You have a question, Peter?
Does the DOR have some guidance on this? And is there another municipal association that you could tap for this kind of information?
Well, Tara, who works for Cabot Risk.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
Not really Maya, said she could recommend some people also.
Correct. That's one of these, our cooking company, that's all they do.
So I'm sure we can come up with several different places to call and get information from.
It's just.
Great, I think that's a good idea.
We want you to save money too, you know, and pass it on to the employee, you know.
As much as you can.
Right.
Right, and as Officer Goody said, you know, what if you kind of drop, oh, hey, you want to come in and charge us 6,000 to 9,000, we have an organization that's willing to come in for free and come in and do this. Might start the bidding war. Well, really?
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay.
So do we have a timeframe for this to be done by, for the request to get out?
Do I have a volunteer?
Well, we won't have to have it the 23rd, we can cancel it and move it off a couple of weeks or whatever.
Right.
We're still going to have the meeting on the 23rd because there's some guests coming in.
Oh, all right.
We've scheduled that, yes.
Okay, you still want to have it?
The insurance, IAC wants to have a meeting.
Right, right, just might be another agenda. Okay. So I'll go back to my question about, do I have a volunteer to do some phone calling or?
Okay, so you guys already had the information, though, I thought you were already calling, is that not true?
Oh, I can do it, it's not a problem.
Okay.
I've been doing this for 30 years.
Just trying to get to who's doing what.
I know.
Huh?
Fantastic.
Just trying to keep track of who's doing what.
Yeah, no problem.
We can't accept the bids. We, we've asked the teachers' union, the police union to submit different companies, and there'll be some people attending on the 23rd. different companies, and there'll be some people attending on the twenty-third. We wanna hear what they do and, and how they've done it, and then convey it to you to look at too, so. And once we know there's a possible bid, we may expedite them to look at that.
So maybe come back in a couple weeks, let us know your progress?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Officer Goody.
Thank you.
All right.
So I don't have to do that one, that's nice.
Secretary.
See, I wasn't crazy, NRP did exist.
Do we wanna skip down to the building inspector study?
Yes.
So that.
Yes, we do.
Joe can go home and some of the other folks perhaps, if they don't wanna stay for all of this. I know it's fun, but, um, is that okay? Is that okay with you guys?
Please.
All right.
I was actually wondering why it wasn't an appointment.
Because it was kinda last minute. All right.
Hi, Joe.
So, we're gonna talk about the study that you sent us and the inspector compensation.
Okay.
And so Joe had sent us some reading material. Um, I don't know if you wanna go over it a bit, or?
Yeah, you've all had a chance to look at it and read it, I assume. Are there, before I say, is there any particular questions that you have on any of the subjects, or offhand? No? All right, um, so, looking at the, the study that, um, looking at the departmental needs that we have currently and possibly into the future, and a compensation study on all of the inspectors. Um, what I was doing was basically looking in for, um, picking up a part-time position for a local inspector for my department, for a local building inspector, to help out with ten to twelve hours a week possibly, give or take, depending on the workload and things that are coming in. Um, right now, we've had the large project for the apartments the NRP group has submitted. Um, they've already submitted for a building permit. Um, they're looking for twenty-one buildings over there, and they're holding us to the thirty-day timeframe to start getting permits out. Uh, so we're working very diligently. Um, Al and Henry were very nice to come in and do takeoffs, uh, so far, to make sure that their estimated permit fees, um, are accurate. Um, right now, electrical, plumbing and gas are all estimated. Uh, it won't be until we actually get the permits in hand from what the contract is gonna be for that, to finalize that number. Um, so we have those in hand. Um, looking at what I was requesting as far as the part-time inspector for the local inspector, just the building permit fee alone that has come in from the NRP group would pay for that position for at least ten years or more, um, currently, just to kinda give you a broad scope of how much these permit fees are coming in for this one individual project. Um, so I believe the funding would be there to, to help offset, um, the additional help needed for the department. In the future, if things continue down the path, I think they're going to continue, uh, of course, like anything, construction is an ebb and flow with the economy, so when the economy is good, construction's good. Uh, when it's not so good, guys usually pull back, there's more redevelopment and, and stuff in industry, more renovation rather than new growth. Um, and that's just the ebb and flow, it's usually a ten-year cycle that comes in and out. Uh, so if you, if you look at it back in two thousand eight, we had a low portion where things were not so good. Here we have ten years later and we're booming again. Um, so that's the kinda cycle we're running in and out of. Um, what I gave you in here were, um, not only the request for the additional personnel, um, also an organizational chart as it has been laid out thus far, um, as the board of selectmen being the oversight of all the department head and myself, um, myself being the building commissioner and know how everything would lay underneath, um, it would be our part-time land use clerk, a part-time wiring inspector, a part-time plumbing and gas, and then if the local building inspector is added to the department, would also be, um, that position that would be reporting to me, and then of course I would report to you. So that would be pretty much the chain of command, um, how it would be set up. Um, as part of the study, we went through the plumbing and gas, um, and the electrical inspectors' current compensation, and, um, after looking at roughly the same thirteen communities that I did for, uh, the fee study, to kinda see how they're comparing to us, um, there's a wide variety. Um, and it all depends on their staffing needs. So some of the employees are salaried part-time, some are salaried, uh, full-time employees, some get paid by permit fee collected, um, some get paid per inspection, and some get paid hourly. Um, so it's a wide variety out there. Looking at the overall general scope of who's getting paid and how, you know, how it's being done, on average, the plumbing and gas inspectors that are out there, on the high side average, we're making about fifty dollars an hour, and the electrical inspectors were making forty-five dollars an hour. Um, looking into that as well, I had asked the two gentlemen that work for us, um, what their typical hourly week is like. Um, Al had reported to me that it's roughly eighteen hours a week that he was spending on average, uh, dealing with phone calls and looking over plans and, um, doing inspections and so forth like that, interacting with contractors. Um, Henry had told me that, um, it's sometimes it's twelve hours up to about fifteen hours a week, that he's doing calls and interacting, and not only that, but reporting to any emergencies that may or may not come in. Um, all the inspectors, of course, are, um, twenty-four seven, you know, if we're needed by the fire department or whoever, we're just a cell phone call away, and we can, you know, show up in a short period of time. Um, again, looking into their compensation at these rates based on the hours that they had given me, I mean, there is room if we did up to nineteen hours, I guess you could say, for both inspectors, uh, no more than nineteen, just because of their part-time status. Um, as far as I know, they, they both collect a W-two, they're not ten ninety-nine employees, um, so they still fall under a town employee rather than an independent contractor. Um, so keeping within those guidelines would be under the twenty hours at nineteen hours a week. Um, currently, the way it's set up is the electrical inspector gets seventy-five percent of all electrical fees collected, uh, for the permit fees, and the plumbing and gas inspector gets ninety-five percent of all the permit fees collected. Um, it is, um, up to the selectmen, of course, if you wanna make a change, there are a few options. Um, one would be moving them to their hourly rate, um, and, and keeping them nineteen hours or less at the hourly rate suggested, or an hourly, you know, wage that you would choose otherwise. Um, and then the other thing is, you know, you could keep them at what they're at currently, with the ninety-five and seventy-five percent respectively, or, you know, again, you could go into the, uh, per inspection or something along that lines. Um, they don't fall into the category where they could be salaried employees. Um, however, those other three options do remain. Um, I have listed, I believe, my suggestions. I mean, one thing from a department head standpoint, um, the, the ninety-five percent and the seventy-five percent are kind of a guestimate when it comes down to budgeting for the department, um, because it does, you know, you're kinda guessing into the little magic ball that tells you they're gonna have X amount of dollars coming in that year, and hopefully you don't go over. Um, when you have something more along the lines of an hourly wage or something like that, it's, it's easier to budget for and kinda say, yes, in this timeframe, they're gonna work nineteen hours a week and make this kinda money, then you can obviously do a yearly budget based off of that. Um, I have included, um, other information in here as far as, um, what we plan to collect so far this year in building permit, electrical, gas, and so on. Um, just so that the board is aware, Al and Henry were very nice, as I said earlier, to put together the estimated cost of the permits. Um, electrical for this one particular project for the apartments, for, uh, the estimate is a little over ninety-nine thousand dollars for that permit. The building permit, which I have here, um, that they've already submitted for those twenty-one buildings, came to three hundred and thirty-four thousand five fifty-five and twenty-three cents. And then Al has graciously come up with a couple of different permit fees if he decides, um, or he thinks that it might be beneficial to give them a discount, um, and go with residential plumbing fees and gas fees. The total between the two permits themselves would be fifty-five thousand nine sixty. Uh, if he went with the commercial as it's listed in the fee, uh, categories that we have now in the fee schedule, it would be a hundred and twenty-two, one twenty for the project, and then the clubhouse that's going in is all commercial anyway, at fifteen hundred and fifty dollars. Um, those are pretty much the numbers in rough, as far as what's come in, what's estimated. Um, and like I said, that's for one particular project. Um, just totaling those up, if we went with that, that would be a little over five hundred thousand dollars coming into the department just for those fees alone for one particular project this year. Now granted, we don't have this type of project coming in every single year, but looking at the growth of the town, um, and stuff that's still eligible for build-out, there are more projects like this that could definitely come down the road at some point, or if not with more residential development coming in, um, you could have similar years of, of high, uh, permit fees coming in. Um, so the estimate that I gave you here, between seven hundred and seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars coming into the department is a realistic fee, uh, permit fees to be collected. Those fees are based off of not only what's coming for this particular project this year, or will, is estimated to come in for this particular project, but also looking at historical data of what we've been doing and trending over the last five years. And as things have gone on, things have trended in an upward fashion. Um, so things are, again, we're in a good economy, things are getting better. Um, so you guys have had a lot of information to look at, and, um, is there any questions in particular that you may have?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you bring it in this year, I don't think you can spend it till next year. Am I correct? No.
Currently, um, with the electrical and gas and plumbing, we're using offset receipts.
Okay.
So at the last town meeting, we voted X amount of money to be able to be used. Um, the way that we're paying them right now, it works good because they will not be paid until the funds come in. As long as funds were collected this year, ahead of time, we could pay them. If we did not actually get a permit fee in, we cannot start paying them. So if you chose to do an hourly rate, we would have to make sure that the permits, because this year we have it set up as offset receipts, and that's the only way we could pay them. For next year's budget purposes, if you decided to switch it over to that, then any fees would just become general fund, and we would do away pretty much with offset receipts. But we have to make sure that the money comes in before we can spend it this year.
Now, is that for fiscal year or is it for calendar year? So if building permit fees and plumbing and electrical and gas fees and so on come in, uh, this fiscal year, they won't get paid for those permit fees?
No, if, if they come in this year, currently, the way that they would be is if they collected them, they would get the percentages based on what the agreement is right now.
Okay.
In the past, when we've had projects like this, then we've usually done a contract of some sort so that when the fees come in, they're only paid so much through the, the course of the project, so that way they have this money to cover permits.
Right, like we did with the hotel?
Yes.
Correct.
And it's all upon loan.
So as the fees start coming in this year, this, this fiscal year, then they would still collect that, correct?
As of right now, yes. So if you, as we've talked, uh, there's a chance that within this month, these permits are gonna be pulled.
Oh, yeah.
So this has to be decided.
Well, plumbing and gas, electrical permits won't be coming in this year at all.
None at all.
None at all, this fiscal year?
Well, they're gonna start the foundation, they're gonna start site work and everything.
Well, I know they got underground coming in and everything too, so.
Yeah, but it's, you, there'll probably be some coming in this year, but not that much, because they're gonna do individual buildings, they're not gonna do the whole thing all at once.
Well, right, right, yeah.
What they have done in the past with the electrical is pull a partial permit and do for your underground and stuff, which would supply plenty of money for, for the period that we're talking about, until they get into the actual building.
But if they don't pay for the permits, we don't do any inspections. That's what the state law says.
So basically, it shouldn't be a problem, whatever we do as far as students concerned.
Until, until.
As long as the permits are pulled before we're paying them. If, like, if you were to switch over today, to say that from here on out, we're gonna pay them hourly for a reinspection, they do, there may not be enough money right now in the offset receipt account to pay them if they have an inspection pending right now, based on hourly, if we've already paid them a percentage. That's my only, so we have to make sure the timing of it is correct.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're gonna switch it, then it was, it's just a matter of, we'll have to figure out which way is better to budget it. If you were to switch them over to an hourly, then I would say offset receipts really.
So would contract work? It did work, I think, for the hotel, correct? Would that work?
Yeah, we still owe them for some of that.
Yeah, because they still haven't got paid out for all the hotel yet, I don't think.
No, you still owe them.
Right, so I mean, I've always never taken a whole lot of money all at once.
Right.
We made a contract with the hotel when we did some in time, and some of the other work we've done, that we only, I only get a certain percentage until it's done, because I hate to put it this way, someday I could drop dead, and then if I get paid all the money, then there's no money to, uh, the town doesn't have the money to pay. So I mean, that's why we always did it that way.
He quit.
Yeah.
Which is kind of another argument for hourly, is it not?
Well, yeah.
Drop dead is a better.
But I think it, the, the hourly, I think, would have to be done at a certain point, you know, where you're making sure that you have the money in hand to do the rest, to do the rest of the fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, so, so I did look into that, and if they were to go to hourly right now, there is more than enough money in the budget currently that was already set aside to pay their entire wage for the rest of the year and still not hit that mark.
As long as we collect a receipt.
Right, I mean, whatever they.
We budgeted for it, but offset receipts, we budgeted X amount, but it doesn't get used unless we've collected it. So if they don't collect, they can't receive any money. That's.
Right.
So it's in the budget.
Right.
As doable, as long as they pull a permit.
Yeah.
If you went to go hourly.
I mean, I would just like to be assured of that probably, if we're gonna change it to hourly, I guess.
When would you be looking at changing it to hourly?
Soon, I mean, as soon as you guys would be ready to, to do it.
So.
Well, can I ask one question? What's, why do we have to make the change? Why did you go on the hourly mark? Why do we have to change the system?
Well, that's, that's a good question. Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, well, for budgeting purposes, it, it makes, uh, budgeting much easier, much more realistic, and something that you can actually shoot for. If you set something up and say somebody's gonna make eighty thousand a year, where it's hypothetical, and they make a hundred thousand dollars a year, or two hundred thousand, or, you know, or maybe they make twenty grand a year, you know, how do you?
Yeah, it's hard to budget.
How do you budget for it? It's kind of a guess, right? You throw a data board and hope you hit the right number.
So are you saying that ten to twelve hours a week is a guaranteed ten to twelve hours a week?
Or less, yeah.
So if I only work one, I'm still, I'm still getting paid for twelve?
No, you work one, you get paid for one.
You're an hourly employee.
And then, so for the three to five years, is there anything that we can put in for like a clause? Because I'd just be concerned about like a reduction in work where, you know, go and go and great, and then it dies. All right, so this is, so that's Al.
I'm gonna show you two.
Nope.
I've already seen those.
That's Henry, that's Al.
That's Henry, that's Al. This is, hang on, this is unknown person?
Yep.
And this is, and that's Leanne?
Yep.
Okay.
These are the plans that dropped for the.
For the.
I'm pretty sure, pretty sure they're gonna be plenty busy.
Bees cake!
I took your picture of your.
Yeah, this, this.
The estimate I gave you for the fifteen hours a week is what we do now, and once we start with that project down there, we're gonna be teeing a heck of a lot more time down there, which to stay part-time doesn't allow that. So I would certainly recommend staying with the permit fees at seventy-five percent and just doing the job rather than tying the job up because I don't have time to go down and do an inspection.
I mean, one thing, looking at it going ahead right now, is budget season's right around the corner. November first, we're gonna be budgeting for the next fiscal year. If you tell me that we're doing offset receipts, that's fine, no problem. However, I will make a guestimate of what I think they will be making, or what might come in for permit fees, and hopefully I'm right. I don't, I can't tell you. If I know that coming up November first, budget season starts, and I know that there are that many hours and I can't budget any more than nineteen hours per week, then I can give you a solid number that's actually realistic, that is there, that's something I can budget for.
Claire, do you have any input? I mean, not only your personnel committee, but I mean, you do this for real, so.
I think the, the piece of it that, um, because I had spoken with Joe about, you know, how to utilize all the people, how to use, how are we gonna know how many hours, that sort of thing. I think that the piece of it is that what's most economical for the town and, and what works for everybody. So that's what we were talking about earlier.
So your recommendation would be for hours and not for percents?
Well, yes, that would be my recommendation, only because if that, that job is as huge as they say it is, that if an inspection and they're getting so much per permit that I understand, that's.
They get a percentage of the permit fees collected.
Right, so say, um, the permit fees are, Joe, a number.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, then, uh, then they would get ninety-five percent of that, so ninety-five thousand dollars. And do we have any idea how much, how many hours of work that is?
And with it collecting a W-two, are they still part-time if they're working more than twenty? Because if they're considered an, an employee, I would assume if you're making a W, if they get a W-two, right, not a ten ninety-nine, or if you're working with a ten ninety-nine and you're a contractor and you pay your own.
Well, let's just say that we're gonna start getting into. Well, let's just say that we're going to start getting into benefits, so it's going to up your...
Well, if you, you'd be getting into benefits if they're working more than twenty hours a week.
Right.
But if, so, they collect a W-2, if you limit them to nineteen hours a week, which is under the twenty, then they stay a part-time.
But Henry just made a comment that he gave you the hours at, what did he say?
He's doing now.
Now.
The hours go up. Of what we're doing in the town now. So, with that project, we're all going to, you know, be doubling that.
You're going to exceed that.
So, that's, you're saying they're not, they will be staying at fifteen, up to fifteen, or not, with the project coming on?
So, with the project, I don't know what they're going to be working with the project on board. But what, I guess what I'm trying to ask the board is, if they're considered a part-time inspector, right, part-time in this town is below twenty hours a week, is that not? So, if you're at that, whether you get ninety-five percent, seventy-five percent, an hourly rate, whatever, if you're working more than twenty hours, then I would assume that you're no longer a part-time employee, you're full-time, so you'd be entitled to benefits regardless. So, if these two gentlemen are working thirty hours a week, and they're getting ninety-five and seventy-five percent, then they should be entitled to benefits, no?
True, but you're their manager, so what are you allowing them to work?
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was setting up, is that less than nineteen or less.
But Henry's saying you're going to exceed that.
We're not billing by hours, we're just getting paid by the offsets. You have no idea how many hours we work. I don't, I don't mind working more hours for the...
No, I understand that.
We're not asking for any benefits.
But legally, legally, you don't get to choose.
Legally, you don't. The original contracts were that they were not benefited employees.
Right.
Because their time varied. So, he may work ten hours this week, next week he may work thirty, for the rest of the month, he may only put in five hours. So, over the course of a year, they weren't working more than twenty hours. During these big projects, they might. So, in the past, right or wrong, they've pretty much been employees with a contract of unbenefited employees. I guess that's weird.
Why can't they just be deemed contractors? Their benefit is so much money, so much percentage, and no hours discussed. I think that's their point, and it seems logical, and a way around it. Well, that's the way we've been going for...
Right, but if they're a contract employee, and they would be ten ninety-nine, or a W-2...
They're employees, they're actual employees right now.
Ten ninety-nine.
Right, but they're actually employees.
All right, all right, all right, all right, everybody.
I mean, it seems to me that it's been working fine, we've never had any problems. One of the things, too, if we limit it to eighteen hours or nineteen hours, and we have to do extra inspections, we're going to tell people we can't do the inspections. Now, according to my plumbing code, if I can't get to that inspection within twenty-four hours, I'm sorry, forty-eight hours.
Right.
They can keep on going.
Right, right.
But then you can't come back on them.
I'm thinking on, on this particular issue, we need to take it under advisement at this point.
I would like more information.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I do think we probably want to maybe go ahead with the part-time inspector, though, because of the amount of work that's coming in.
I'd prefer to take it under advisement. We can talk about it again next week, or later, or whatever you prefer.
I prefer to wait.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about it next week, because the project has started, and I think that Joe is going to need the help, frankly.
Well, it's, you mean, so, I'm talking about the inspector.
I was talking about Joe's part-time inspector.
That he's requesting.
That he's requesting.
Right.
That the work has already dropped.
Well, I was just saying, we'll take under advisement the issue with the inspectors at this point. So, I guess I have a couple of questions about the request. I honestly don't think there's, is there a legal way, June, to pay for someone that would come in right now?
No, we have no money, no funds available to pay somebody part-time right now.
You'd have to put it in your budget for fiscal year twenty-one.
Twenty, you mean twenty? Twenty, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty.
I don't know what year it is. So, there, there just isn't a way to pay for someone who would come in at this point in the middle of the year, unless you were going to have them come in, like, you know, July first, or something. I don't know how that would help you now, when you have issues.
Okay.
When, when were you thinking that this person would work?
So, evenings is possible. I'd be looking for somebody that's probably working a full-time job, and we're looking to pick up a part-time position. I wouldn't be looking for anybody to come in and work in the middle of the day, or anything like that, and interrupt their job.
So, if you were looking to bring someone else on, is that, I know that you have another obligation to another town, right? Would that obligation go away, and you'd be burling full-time, or would you still divide your hours?
I would still divide my hours.
It does, it doesn't make me feel comfortable saying, let's hire someone, when we have the salaried employee, though. It's not going to look right to people.
So, he's supposed to work eighty hours, because the amount of work is...
I'm still, in this town, I still work between forty-five and sixty hours a week.
Yes.
Depending on the week. So, you can't say that I'm not putting in my forty hours.
Never, no.
All right, so, what I'm saying is, is I can't get the workload done on my own, working forty-five to sixty hours a week, regardless of anything else. So, whether I'm working...
I'm just going to say, you know, what the elephant is in the room.
Right, I am working in another community. I have financial obligations to my family, and I need to work a second job.
Yeah.
So, that's the unfortunate truth. However, it does not negate the fact that I am doing my job every single day, when I am here. And I put in more than the forty hours every single week that I am here. So, I am here doing my job, and that's, that's it. So, this second employee that I'm looking for has nothing to do with me working a second job. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yeah, I'm clear on how you feel about it, yes.
Okay, you don't feel that way?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Is there anything else we want to talk about this evening? Did you want to talk about any more of the, this part?
You can, if you'd like to.
Well, I had only put the other two things on, did I not? So, I guess we probably can't.
I mean, it's in the study, we are discussing the study, aren't we, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's discuss it.
Well, no, it was the, no, I lost my agenda.
What, this year, or just this one?
Yep. Building Inspector Study and Inspector's Compensation.
Am I one of the inspectors? Am I an inspector?
You're the building inspector.
Right, so, okay. So, I guess I follow today, I guess, do I follow on the study category, or no?
You, well, yeah, this is part of the study. I couldn't remember how I worked it out.
Okay.
So, do you, do you want to go over any more of this?
Sure, absolutely. Do you have particular questions?
I think just for the purposes of the audience, you may want to...
Sure.
Explain what this is.
When, in this year, the evolution of the building commissioner's responsibilities and role. So, yes, I was hired in two thousand seventeen. My initial job responsibilities, customer service is always first and number one. Investigate complaints, yeah, do that for everybody. Conduct annual inspections as required, always. Manage the land use clerk, that was right on, number one. Okay, personnel reviews, yeah, I had one personnel problem. Department budgeting, none of this is out of the ordinary. Zoning enforcement, night meetings were not required at that point in time. Building code enforcement has always been in effect. Plan review and inspections, always the same, and no more than forty hours required. As I have been working in this position, my job has, still does customer service on a daily basis, I still investigate complaints. Now, I budget three departments, building, plumbing, gas, and electrical. I manage the plumbing, gas inspector, the electrical inspector, and continue to manage the land use clerk. I do personnel reviews for two inspectors and the land use clerk, rather than just the land use clerk. I attend several night meetings monthly as needed, including ZBA, planning, select board meetings, conservation, economic development when asked, border health, which is tomorrow night. I am also the XO official to the, to the energy committee, and I am also meeting with conservation on Wednesday night this week. I do zoning enforcement, as always done. I was elected as a trench officer, and continue to do my education for that, to maintain that license. I've always done building code enforcement, plan review, and inspections. My work now varies between forty-five and sixty hours a week, depending on workload and meetings. I have implemented new fees for the building, plumbing, gas, and electrical. I'm implementing currently new permitting software that will save people three percent on a project. This project alone is going to pay over ten thousand dollars to GOTMS, just because it used the system to apply. That won't happen anymore with this new permitting software. Soon, I'm going to be in the earthworks committee, if everything gets passed to the special town committee. I've helped the town develop new bylaws, or especially the solar, I mean, the soils bylaw, in particular. I'm developing with the fire department, and this is something in my own initiative, is a public awareness and importance of building safety in conjunction with the fire department. So, that's something we're looking to put on, so I can update the public on new changes and things that are going on in the community. And then, I also conduct the annual inspections as required. I think, in the portion in the time that I've been here, I've created good working relationships with other departments, department heads and committees and boards. I've opened up that line of communication. I also attend various meetings throughout the month, and continuing education trainings all the time, so that I can maintain my license and keep my job. Any questions about the new stuff that I do, or just the old stuff?
I thought David was the trench officer.
There's three.
There's three of us.
The prior building inspector was also a trench officer.
Well, I happened to look at, when I was doing all my homework this weekend for this meeting, I happened to see the land use, inspector land use job description. And I don't know if this is accurate or not, but it does say that the, the work is performed by the land use clerk, under the general direction of the building inspector and land use boards, but ultimately managed by the board of selectmen. Now, this may be out of date, or it was done in two thousand fourteen?
It does remain that way, at least officially at the minute, unless you want to change it, because there was three, there were six different bosses. There were the building, the electrical, the plumbing, but also the conservation commission, the planning board, and the zoning board of appeals. Even though two of those boards don't choose to use the clerk's services, there's six bosses. So, instead of trying to figure out amongst six different people, the selectmen appoint and had managed that post.
Yes, except practically, Joe is doing the management.
Yeah.
We are, we are not.
No.
ZBA is also given...
That's why I said, I'm not sure if this is out of date, or, or what, I was looking through for other reasons.
Nor does it make sense for us to, to step in there, as Joe works with her on a daily basis, and manages her time with her.
All right, do you have anything else you want to add to this, or...
I guess the thing that I'm just trying to put to bed is, people are concerned that I'm working a second job, provide for my family. And that seems to be an issue for some people, even though I'm working more than forty hours a week in this town. I don't know why people have a concern with what I do in my personal life, because I take care of my business, provide for my family. That's it, point blank.
I think it's just the hours that they're looking for you, and you're not here, that's all.
Well, the thing is, I have a number of signs that are on my door, it tells me when I'm here, and that if you need to meet with me, I'm in and out daily for inspections. So, make an appointment, give me a call, something. I'm not putting my cellphone up there, because you don't pay for my cellphone, and I'm not getting calls in the middle of the day or the middle of the night from a contractor. So, if somebody wants to meet with me, they can call the office, leave a number, leave a message, or send me an email. I'll be more than happy to get back to them within twenty-four hours and set that up. You want to meet me at one o'clock in the afternoon? That's fantastic, I have no problem doing that. But if I don't know you're going to be there, and I have a scheduled inspection, I'm going to the inspection, because it's on my calendar. It's just the way it is.
Yeah, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. Anybody else have any more questions?
I don't have a question, but I think it's wrong to continue to harass Joe over something that we did indeed approve.
No one is harassing, no one is harassing him.
Oh, my goodness, this has come up...
Lisa.
Over and over again, about his second job, over and over again.
Not for me.
He does his work, and he does it well.
Lisa.
And we're lucky to have him. And frankly, if I was treated this way as an employee, I would be looking for another position. I would rather not lose Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You won't.
All right.
So, do we make a motion to leave this under advisement, to talk about it next week, or are you expecting a decision tonight?
I, I think we need to leave it under advisement. I don't know if we need to take a vote on it, unless you prefer to do that.
Go ahead and table it until next week.
Chris, can I add something?
Mm-hmm.
So, I've had very little contact with Joe, but the little contact I've had was, Dear Joe, I wanted to ask him something EDC-wise, by email. He was right back on the phone with me.
Yep.
I believe I called you while I was at home, too, am I...
Yeah, and you offered me your cellphone, which I thought was generous. I use...
I, I understand.
That's my personal experience.
Yeah, me too. But, sometimes you have to listen to the others, too.
Do we have written complaints about Joe's performance or not being here during the day, in the morning?
No. No, we don't. All right. Let's see, what else do we have here?
Reappointments.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
The...
Thank you, Al, thank you, Henry, by the way, for coming in.
The reappointment to the zoning board of appeals for two terms through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
And they're both fine with the reappointments?
Yes.
Dennis Bartlett and Lynn Ryan?
Motion to reappoint Dennis Bartlett and Lynn Ryan.
I'm chugging in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we've got the fire chief's search update.
It's chugging along, I spoke with a couple people last Friday, they're going to be similar to what Badge Quest provided, they'll be providing us with a proposal, not probably as in-depth, but I just asked for, tell me your services, tell me how much you're going to cost us, and then apply. And they were like, all right.
Okay. Do you, I guess, are you talking about two, three?
Well, this would be one, and so, yeah, there would be two more that would be coming in, yeah.
All right. All right. Special town meeting preparation.[1636.12] So I assume that you both had a chance to look at Brian Mazur's edits or suggestions to the warrant? Did you? Okay. You want to just go through it quickly from the beginning?
I'll start too.
Okay. From the beginning?
Yeah.
All right. Of course, the first part was the special act. I guess what my question is, is are there anything in the suggested changes from the town council that we need to implement because this has gone to the printer? So...
I'm going to say no because it came back and Representative Notton's legal counsel, the state legal counsel, which is going to be looking at this, was fine with it.
Okay. You're talking about the special act then?
Yeah. That's what you're asking.
Well, I'm asking about the whole thing, but let's start with that.
So I guess my questions, and I wrote them down, that's why I picked up my tablet, so apologies. So it's in the mail, well, it went to the printer and it got mailed today, correct? So it should be in people's house by midweek.
It'd be by tomorrow. Never know.
Are there meetings that are being set up this week, next week? This week, next week? That's it, right before the town meeting, the special town meeting? Are there meetings being set up to discuss this on a broader issue, on a broader base with the folks in town and department heads?
You mean the special act?
Yeah, the special act.
Okay. Yeah, I think there was, uh... Okay, nineteen Carter?
I think so. I was not there on Wednesday, but that was the intention, yes.
So there's only one meeting?
I don't know.
I would imagine there's only one meeting since we're only two weeks out from...
I guess that's one of my concerns again, is, are we giving enough time to people in this town to read it, understand it, go to the one meeting that there might be it, or are we expected for them to truly either read it the night of the meeting, which I doubt that's going to happen, or just sit there and have a question and answer session at the town meeting?
I don't think this is any different than any zoning board or any other thing that people choose or choose not to read at town meeting. And honestly, forums are just pretty much a brand-new thing in the last couple of years. So, you know, what we're doing more now is more than has ever been done. Not to mention this project has been going on for 18 months in open meeting, weekly meetings, where if people really wanted to get down into the nitty-gritty, they were welcome to come. This has also been out in the, you know, in various incarnations that are not that much different from where it started up in, on my town government. This hasn't been a secret.
Said it was. Again, my concern is just that we're giving enough people, we're giving people enough time to read it, understand it. Yes, there were a couple forums, yes, it's been out there, yes, Beth and company have had meetings. Again, I point back to the town officer meeting that we had two weeks ago when Beth stood up and said, did anybody read it? And that's what you got for a response.
People have two weeks to read it. They have two weeks and they can either choose to do that or not. And they're going to either choose to do that if they really want to go over it, or they're not. You cannot make people read this, no matter how long you give them. You cannot make them go to forums. This is what town meeting is.
I understand that. I'm well aware of what a town meeting is and is supposed to do. I'm just concerned that the folks in town are given enough time to read it and understand it. I read it three or four times and it still took me three or four times to go through it again.
Still learn something.
Correct. And every time I read it, I circle something else and go, oh, I wonder how I missed that. So that is just my concern with the push for this to go through in two weeks. I mean, that was my concern last week. It's my concern again this week, is that we're pushing this through when this was just an advisement committee, just to advise, not to say, this is how it's going to be.
We've already approved the warrant. This is going to town meeting.
Yeah. There's always options, even if it goes to town meeting. It's just a discussion.
Peg, what do you recommend? I kind of agree with what you're saying. Well, what do you recommend, given?
I don't, I don't understand the push to have it go through in October. I mean, no one wants a special town, another special town meeting, dear Lord, no. But is there a harm in giving it a few more weeks to stand up at the special town election and say, in a couple of weeks, we're going to pass over this because we want you to, we want to give you time? Going to Lisa's point, you can read it or not, you can vote on it or not, but we've had too many instances of the town where people raise their hand and go, yep, and then the thing, and then it gets enacted and people go, oh, I didn't want to vote for that. And then they're stuck, so...
But this one, from a parliamentary standpoint, you have no choice but to put it, to have it go through and then make a motion to pass it over.
Correct.
During that point, you, one, two or three of you could recommend to pass over or not, as you obviously know.
Um, go ahead. No, I was just going to say that I've had, you know, feedback from a few people that are concerned whether the language covers them as employees in the building, you know, for hiring and firing, and is it just the town administrator who will be responsible or will we get to have some input with the town administrator? And I keep reading through it and I'm not really clear myself. So, I mean, this is something I can go to the forums and ask myself, or others could too. And I kind of wish that, you know, we'd had just a little bit more time to at least talk with the group, you know, as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, we're supposed to read this, you know, we, collective, we are supposed to read this, we are supposed to understand it at some certain level, you know, and we're expecting the same thing for folks on that side of the table and over there on TV.
My recommendation would be that you guys go and ask your questions at the forum and that anybody else who has questions about it, go and ask them at the forum.
Problem is, is there, you know, if there has to be a change made, then we'd have to go to the next step.
Ask the questions.
Yeah. You don't, I mean, it's, we're talking about, you know, you're not a part of the committee, so I don't take it personal.
I'm looking at something that has been in progress for 18 months. This is not a new thing.
Nope, it isn't. I guess maybe it is to some of us, though.
Well, and the thing is too, is that, you know, Lisa, you've been part of this, you've been in the weeds with it even more so than Chris and I.
And anybody else, any, either one of you could have also come to that meeting. That is an open meeting. You're welcome as a citizen to come to any open meeting.
That's right.
My point is...
That was your choice.
That is correct. My point is, you have had a far deeper opportunity that allows you to understand this. Are we giving the same opportunity to people in town for that? That's all I'm saying, by delaying it two weeks, three weeks. That's where I'm coming from.
How would you delay it two or three weeks? Have another special town meeting?
Here, here, here. Let these guys...
I don't know. I don't know. Those are potential options. I don't know, Peter. I don't have an answer.
You're talking about trying to potentially do another special town meeting in three weeks, which is pretty much an impossibility given to the legal timing and which...
We're not, we're not talking about that right now. We're just talking about feedback on the articles for the warrant.
I mean, that's my feedback. I don't think we're giving folks enough time to get it, read it, understand it, be able to get up and ask specific questions.
Then let them choose at town meeting whether that's how the community feels.
That's fine. We could do that too. So...
You could also chain it up on the Facebook page, both for my...
So why don't we move on to the town administrator's search prep, which didn't really seem to have much feedback from council.
Is that the one we're asking for money?
What's, pardon me?
Is that the one we're asking for money?
Yes. $16,000.
It was just a capital.
Right. And then the next one, I don't feel we've had anything from council.
Just like down degrading the...
The highway, those look good. And, you know, I don't know whether the fire articles, if that's things that they feel are significant. Were, was everyone given? No.
Give, everyone give a what?
Like, was fire given feedback from council on theirs? No.
I...
On their articles, just us, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah. I don't know whether...
By the way, the feedback from town council came on Friday.
Right.
So...
I know.
And it went out in the mail today.
What, I laid on the table for you all the sign over the weekend.
Was this, was this without the...
Without any...
Changes, without any changes. That's why I wanted to go through this, to make sure there's not something that maybe needs to be rectified on the floor.
So for those fire ones, do we have Paul stand up and talk to every one of them?
One of us would have to read the article because he's not a resident.
Right.
And then we could ask that he stand up and speak to it. So would it be, would it behoove us to have it sent to the fire chief to let him see the comments on his articles? Or not? He could always make a, an amendment on the floor if he wanted to change anything. If he didn't feel they were significant, then...
Town council will review typically the motions.
Yeah.
In advance too, to make sure that whatever you think that you would like to try and change their motion is actually...
Right.
Possible.
I mean, yeah, does it, does it change them drastically or is it...
No, I don't really think so.
Just the ones that say comment.
Yeah.
The town's typical format and insert the correct line item reference. I think that probably we have. So that might be moot.
Is it worth, is it worth maybe you talking to town council and seeing how vital these changes are?
Well, I thought maybe we could figure it out, but, you know...
Well, I mean, I would look at the sum of $1,900 rather than $1,900 and go, it doesn't seem very significant.
Right.
I'm not, I mean...
Right.
Or do we just give it to Paul and just have him look at it? Because I don't want him to get up thinking that it's one-way and then...
Right.
He gets called up and all of a sudden there's additional language in there.
Oh, no. It will be exactly the way he wrote it.
Okay.
Right. And then these are suggested changes that haven't been implemented in the warrant. When we, I mean, we could just have his portion forwarded to him with the comments and say, hey, you're good with this?
Do you have any questions?
You're good with this, you know?
All right.
When you get down to the like-kind soil general bylaws, I think there's a couple of things that Amy has actually changed.
Yeah.
And we may want to make an amendment on the floor.
Or exportation seems important to me.
Yes. Her changes, I think she just is re-looking at it for probably like the second or third time and, or fourth time, and has changed some words. I mean, I think that one of the changes was changing from cubic feet to cubic yards, and that's a big difference. So I'm going to, I mean, we will see her, I believe...
Next week?
October 10th. We could ask her then, or we could just make a motion to make these changes and have something printed up to have as a handout at the door of what the changes were that we make.
Yeah, certainly on, on the earthworks, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking so too. And I can, I can email her and let her know if you'd like. Here's my agenda. Would you like me to email her and just, I can show her that portion and then maybe, Mary, would you like to email Paul and just give him his portion just to, I mean, he'll probably be fine, but we figured he'd probably be fine, you can say, but we wanted to just double-check with them.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So after the, oops, Earthworks, I don't know which pages go where.
Which way are you going? You're going to go that way because here's page 13, so...
Well, then 12 goes down, then this one, okay. I think. Oh, who knows? This is still the Earthworks, so I'll just put this in the pile and figure it out later. Then there were, wait a minute.
Bunching cable access. Didn't we just take that one from what we've already passed before every year?
I'm sorry?
The cable access one? We've passed this one. People are correct now?
No, I think that's a new one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Since the modernization, before we used to do it for revolving funds.
Okay.
Yeah, there may be some...
I don't know how much of a change they made to it.
Maybe June would like to look at that one. Just the cable access station, FY19 funding. And I think that there was a comment saying that the special article closeout cannot go back to free cash, it has to go to the general fund.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
It can't go to free cash, it has to go to general fund, because I think we had either/or...
For...
For the special article closeouts.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, that was one of the comments from council.
It has to go back to the general fund.
Yes.
Yes.
Or, or I think it could go back to Highland Commons, but it can't go to free cash.
Yeah, I can't, there is no such thing as going back to free cash.
Right.
It'll just go back to general fund.
So, I mean, not that it needs to be corrected, you could just say in the motion that you're going to do it to general fund.
What did they change on cable?
It's pretty significant.
Appropriated the funds, oh, deleted, appropriated the funds. The article was overlooked at the annual town meeting giving.
I'm guessing it needs to be there.
Looks like he just flipped it around.
In this, we don't have to say that they're going to pay us back, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That needs to be taken out if it's still there.
No, it's not.
No. Would they, I mean, June asked that it be taken out.
Okay.
She'll just handle it.
All right.
Yeah, it looks like he just flipped stuff up top versus on the bottom.
So probably not that significant then.
Look, I flipped the summary in the article.
Mass general law. It just says, instead of it being down here, he flipped it up here. But here it says to vote appropriate from the mass, from the peg access and cable-related fund created. Oh, that's all. He just changed, yeah, just changed the wording. It's okay.
So that's fine the way it is.
Yeah, it just reworded a little.
It was probably just a smoothing out or a straightening.
Yeah, to make it more probably legalish.
You're right. She may want to take a look at the stabilization, I mean, the special article closeout too. You want to look at that one too?
Just the front.
Just the comments.
Is it too small?
No. I just have to put it in the right bifocal area.
I know. These glasses are terrible. I have to do the same thing.
Get progressive, it's easier.
These aren't progressives.
Are they?
They still put everything for writing.
I know, like right there.
Down here.
Only here, they're saying that they're closing it out to the general fund.
Because it can't go back to free cash.
That was not the initial, was to close out the ones from free cash to the general fund, but the other ones not.
Yeah, because we want to put it back into mitigation.
This is saying, right, and this is saying that all of the stuff is going to be closed out to the general fund.
Oh, really? Even mitigation?
That's what the article says, to see if they will close out to the general fund, the following appropriations made.
Is there, do you know of any reason why we can't put it back into Highland Commons altar?
Absolutely none, because we've done it.
Okay.
So...
Then we shouldn't do that.
No.
So it doesn't look like there needs to be any changes to the actual chart.
Yeah, I would say you may want to check with town council on this one, but I would say that you could probably do it in the motion, you just have, may have to reword.
So will the return to change?
So you may have to do close out to the general fund, A, B, C, and if there's any other for free cash. I don't know how to move your mouse down.
Oh, it's just, it's two fingers?
Yeah.
I don't know why it's two fingers.
So like, yeah, and then like G would go back to free cash and then you would close out D to public safety and then the others too. So you may have to reword. to public safety, and then the others, too. So, you may have to reword the, the motion.
Yeah.
And do it in three sections versus all in one.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And when do we have to have the motions written? Shortly, I would assume.
Do the motions go to town council?
They do go to town council.
Yeah, so probably the sooner the better.
Right. Oh, boy. Next week, then. That'll be on the agenda, Mary.
I send them...
Or you just send them?
Yeah, I just send them.
Okay, good.
I mean, you guys divvy up who's going to present which.
Right.
You can do it now, or you can do it before. You can do it whenever you want.
Right.
And if you want to look at the motions first, I can send them to you.
No.
Or I'll send them, I'll copy simultaneously when I send them.
Right, that sounds good.
Good.
It looked like, it looks like there's a lot of changes on the abandoned funds, the borrowing premiums.
But mostly in the summaries?
Mostly, it's, yeah.
So, it's just the stories?
Deleting parts of the summaries, but unfortunately, those aren't things that need to be changed.
I mean, some things he could just, or she could have just changed because it sounds better versus it's an actual technicality that needs to be...
Well, there was an actual whole paragraph that was deleted from the summary, so...
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
The summary we're not voting on.
No, no. I just found it kind of funny. So...
Which one has the pull paragraph?
Abandoned funds.
Good lord. That came in a thousand pieces like an erector set.
I mean, the, the explanation was longer than the article.
I had Dennis specifically check it, too.
What's that?
I had Dennis specifically check that, too, so...
All right, so, then the next one is the marijuana, I believe. Is that on the next page?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Oh, no, non-payment. So, this is the, this is the Dennis page.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe we could send this to Dennis, and if he wants to make a motion, too, that would be, you know, his choice. Does that sound good to you, too?
Sure. But, you know...
I mean, it looks like, it, it's a lot of deletions, and so I don't see, unless they are significant in, you know, in what they are that's being deleted. Usually, it's a word or something, but...
I mean, the articles almost should be pulled directly from Municipal Modernization Act.
Right.
That's where he got them, correct?
Hmm, I'm assuming.
So, they're really, those are sort of things we're adopting.
So, it really may not be things that are significant enough to change. So, then we're moving on to the marijuana, and...
Did you close out the night?
Yeah. And there were a couple of things, I think, that may be of concern. Oh, yeah. I think in the marijuana bylaw, and I'm looking at page twenty-four, there was a couple of changes from the words deleted planning board and put in ZBA. So, that might be something that's rather significant.
Which article numbers?
We are looking at page twenty-four, which...
Yeah, but I have a different version, so...
Oh, okay.
Find three, C, under...
Under special permit. A special permit and site plan approval.
Oh, marijuana cultivators. It's at the very bottom of the, um...
Definitions?
No, no, pass that. The definitions is the short one.
Special permit and site, it starts with marijuana retailers and RMDs engaged in retail dispensing of medical marijuana shall not be permitted. That's the top of the page.
Just page twenty-one.
All right, so here's the marijuana tax.
Right.
All right, so you had nothing starred.
And it's at the bottom of the page.
Nope, nothing until I got here.
Nothing starred, all right. Okay.
So, the...
So, they're saying that should be changed?
To zoning board of appeals.
I'm assuming it should probably be changed. Now, you might want to run it by Ron and Tim.
To make sure that it's...
It should be planning board and not ZBA?
No, it should be, it should be zoning board instead of planning board, right.
As the sponsor of the, just in the tax?
Yes.
In the tax, okay.
Yes. Can you send them the section from Brian Mazers?
Yep.
And, yeah, so it's the fire chief, Dennis, and the planning board. And... And so that covers...
There's also something else in there, which was the table.
Right. So, that she needs, Mary, whoops, sent the whole thing.
Keep going. So, give them nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Yeah, just give them all the, all the marijuana.
All right. Strike battle's on TV.
All right, and then the citizens petition, the only comment that I made note of was that this citizens, this citizen petition requests that the selectmen place this question on the ballot. I note that town meeting does not have the authority to direct or require the board of selectmen to take this action. Thus, an affirmative vote on this question would not be binding on the actions of the board. Meaning, if we didn't want to, we wouldn't have to. Right, so...
They do that from actin'.
Yeah, so I guess we'll play that by ear.
Worry about it if it, yeah.
All right. So, I think that was it on the special town meeting warrants.
And not sharing that feedback on Article twenty-two. That's just for the board's use. Right.
Right, right. No, no.
All right, your paper clipped in back in order.
Aw, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, have we covered everything on here? Any inspector studies? Okay, then we're to other new business or old business. Or selectmen updates. Do we have any of those?
I just had a quick question based on the email for CMS RPC best practices. Who is heading that up and doing that?
For which?
Well, for doing the actual grant piece of it.
For, we want one and two.
I know we want one and two, but we need to make sure that the grant gets in, and I just...
I thought that was Claire. I'll can follow up with her.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it goes.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember, actually.
It was a little fuzzy because it went to Tim, and it went to Claire, and I, I wasn't sure that anybody actually got...
And Tim and I actually signed it, I think. Wasn't that the one?
No, but we have to fill out the grant application.
Right.
And that has to go in sooner rather than later, so I just want to make sure that it goes.
Did, excuse me, did you talk about the flyer that was, was that what you were talking about, the marijuana flyer that was sent in the mail?
No.
No.
Have you seen it?
I, I did see, I did get it. I didn't look at it.
There's something misleading on it. I don't know if any of you have it with you.
No.
That's, that's kind of up to, folks got, folks have to do their research on, folks have to do their research and decide, you know,
Well, I think just if you had a look at it, and, and I'm correct, which I may not be, it says something like, if you, if you don't vote yes on this proposal at the end of two thousand eighteen, there will be no choice but for the shops to be legal.
Well, that's by that zoning, that first zoning article is on there, so we need to vote for that first. It's, it's not a moratorium. The moratorium will be up in December, but we need to vote, no matter what else we vote, the first planning board article needs to be voted, because that'll take care of that.
I think that's, but that's my reason for saying that that's misleading.
Well, if, if we decided to not vote that article, then we would be sort of wide open, but we're all going to vote that article.
It doesn't say if, it just says period. So, that's why I think it's misleading. You'll see it at home and see if...
I'll take a look at it now.
Top center, it's kind of plain.
So, Jay, here I am thinking, can you pass along a message also? Mary's going to email the planning board, but about the marijuana article?
What about?
That there were, there was, town council gave some suggested changes, so Mary will be sending it. But I, I forgot you were sitting here, because I'm looking so closely.
I should really go to Ron.
Huh?
I should go to Ron.
I typically give to Ron and Tim.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because we are meeting again before the meeting.
Okay. All right, so...
Lucy Ayers gave me her resignation verbally for ATR committee, town newsletter, et cetera, so...
For everything, or?
Pretty much for everything that she was doing.
Okay.
She's done. So, we need another volunteer for the annual town report committee, so if anybody is interested in that, let us know.
Why is she resigning?
Um, she's stepping away from the town stuff.
Personal reasons? We'll just leave it at personal reasons.
I was going to say, you really want me to go there?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, we'll just leave it at...
Yeah.
Her resignation should go to the town clerk's office, if you have it in writing.
I, I don't have it in writing. I'm not sure I can get it in writing.
Okay, we'll take your word for it.
Does she have any town stuff that needs to come back to us, software, blah, blah, blah?
No, we're good.
All right. Keys to the building, anything like that?
Lucy never had keys for...
She doesn't need an exit interview?
No, she's a volunteer.
Okay, just checking. Just want to make sure we cross over everything.
All right, um, did you have any more reports?
Um, just Holly is starting to look at a solution for Powder House News and the bus, so she's...
I automatically thought school bus, but...
No, and then I was at COA, and once again, the, the bus storage came up, so I need to figure out something before.
Okay.
They're putting diapers on the floor now to stop the water.
Oh.
Say that again?
There's a leak in the roof of the bus.
Oh, oh, oh.
In the what? There's a leak in the what?
Leak in the roof of the bus.
The what? Roof?
I'm from the Midwest, yep.
Don't let her give you a hard time. I said
Roof!
I had to change my whole language when I moved here. I said roof, roof.
Mary, where are we with, and maybe I missed it, I lost it, with sending out a request to everybody to ask what they needed to go somewhere, you know, like out to George to say
Space needs?
Space needs.
I did not, you want me to poke everyone again? Because what I gave you then?
I think, I think what I was thinking was that we need to put it on an agenda to create a subcommittee. Now, I mean, since it's not on the agenda tonight, I don't...
Space and storage needs.
Yeah, I mean, because we kind of sort of know, but we don't know specifics. Are we talking a mower, two mowers, four buses, six of these, which is going to depend upon how much space we're using in the town or where the space is.
And I, I kind of thought, I actually spoke to Tim Wheeler about planning board maybe being involved.
Right.
Uh, you know, so maybe it's something we
Because I think once we take care of that, then we can take care of the bus with the leaky roof.
Yeah, and it just, um, before winter.
I wonder if there is any more space at the old firehouse.
Well, there, there are options. It's just where
Which one is the least
Who has priority?
Dangerous, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a few questions before I, before we wind up.
Yep.
Uh, did you have anything else pegged, or?
No, I'm good.
Let me just say that I had a conversation today with Ernie Hooley, who is the superintendent of ASABET, that you had voted that I would be the representative for negotiations for their, their teacher negotiations. He is going to ask the school committee to go to a meeting, and I forget what the date was. I think it's next week, um, one day, because he had two offers, one from us and one from Marlboro, and so the school committee will have to take a vote as to who they would like, whether it's the Marlboro representative or myself. And so I'll keep you posted. All right. I think that's about it right now.
Mary, did you hear back from anybody on all the personnel evaluations, because they're due today? Do you know if they're all in? Is that something Tom and Claire are coordinating?
Well, since I'm not receiving them, I don't
Hoping that they're in the, in the mailboxes?
I'm not opening those envelopes unless they would like that admin help, but I, I didn't think that I should.
Okay, all right. I'll ping Claire and just ask her if she has, Claire, Tom, if they have a running list of maybe what's owed. Yeah, okay, I got it.
I'm happy to do it if they'd like it.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Just based on the number of envelopes in there, it looks like a good half of the departments have probably done it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, so we have nothing further. I would accept a motion to adjourn?
Does
Oh, I had a question.
Jay has questions. Jay?
Jay.
Oh.
You got questions?
It's your turn.
I came for the dirt discussion, but then it was interesting, so I stayed.
Oh.
Stay for the dirt.
We're going to be getting six or seven hundred truckloads of dirt moved, you know? Yeah, okay. Um, okay, did I get, it's hard to follow what's going on, because you guys are all looking at documents we don't have. So, that's why I just got a couple of questions. Is the, is the tax rate, what was the five hundred dollars? Is the average property tax bill?
The average tax bill is about, or the average, um...
House price.
House price. It has gone up about six percent to four hundred and eighteen thousand in town. That, in addition to the fact that, you know, we spent money at town meeting, we're going to, the tax bill, average tax bill is going to go up about five hundred and thirty dollars, yes.
What, what is the average tax?
It will go up from six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Wait, single family. I'm trying to see. It'll go up five hundred, am I looking up the right one? No, she gave us a new one, didn't she?
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, she gave us a new one. You can actually look at the sheet, maybe.
Yeah, just make sure, oh, that, that's a sample tax bill, so maybe that's not the right one.
Yeah, that's not the right one.
I have it here somewhere.
It's here, though. It's this one. Oh, okay, so, six thousand, three hundred dollars and twenty-six cents goes up five hundred and thirty and twelve cents.
Right.
That's like nine percent.
It's eight point four one percent, yep. And we really couldn't
Very good.
do a whole lot better.
Yeah.
I, I looked, I tried. The numbers don't change.
So, does it give you three, the reaction that they're spending too much?
I, it depends on, you know, each voter has a chance to look at what do they want to spend on, and they could both...
It's put in front of them, and most people are like Lemmings and just follow.
Well, another, another piece of this is when property, last year, our average property value was three hundred and ninety-five thousand. This year, it's four hundred and eighteen. That makes a difference.
The tax rate gets adjusted, so that's a wash, yeah.
Well, it's not a wash.
Because there's like a thousand
It does.
households in town or something, so
Yeah.
Every dollar you spend gets split among those thousand.
It does.
Because it is interesting, the, all these spending appropriations come up to town, town meeting, but no one really has any idea what it's going to mean to them in taxes.
Just like Peg said about the town administrator thing.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking is, because there was later a discussion about the town administrator, I wouldn't quite sure, wouldn't quite follow it, but in the information that's being provided, for everybody to look at for the two weeks we were talking about, is there a number, an estimate for what that's going to cost each household on the property taxes?
Not each household. It would also be difficult, because of the split tax rate, to show exactly how that's going to play out.
Hmm, I don't think so, because it's just, if you just make the
Are you just asking?
I mean, you could probably do the math just based on what I mean, you could probably do the math just based on what you think the town administrator is going to cost across the, the number of households.
Well, I think it's like 200 or 300 dollars per family.
For a, for a town administrator.
That's a significant chunk of change.
It could be more.
Two or 300 dollars?
Yeah, that seems high.
I think so, because, because you figure a town administrator plus whatever support they needed stuff is going to be.
But the commercial is going to take some of that.
No.
Oh, that's right.
The commercial also takes some of that, so you can't just do that straight from the...
But do you know what the split in dollars between commercials?
It's, well, it's the shift.
It's like half or something.
For this year, you shifted 45% over. It's, it's really late for me to do this math. I can sit with you and show you.
45% in dollars is coming from commercials?
No, it's less than that, but then we shift some over. It's, the numbers were...
At least 100 bucks.
I believe there used to be a calculator on the DOR website that you could plug in some numbers, and it would actually tell you on how much the average tax bill would go up based on what you spent.
That would almost be nice to see them...
It's not as easy to find now as it used to be.
I'm sure the question will come up, actually.
Right, but that would, that would be...
At one time, I think at one town meeting a long time ago, they actually had that, so each article said it's going to cost you $10. It's going to cost you...
That would be nice.
$50. It's going to, and I think that would be helpful.
It is, I mean, because kind of going back to, right, going back to Peter's question, where everyone is just like...
Yeah.
You know, and then at the end of the day, you're like, oh crap, I just raised my taxes by $500 if I had known, I might have put some plot into it.
If your tax bill's going up $500, I would think there's going to be some people that are pretty upset about that.
If they recognize it, if they notice it.
Oh, because we're not going to tell them.
We don't...
Well, and also, I mean, it went down last year by a significant amount.
By a significant amount, and unfortunately for us, that's why we try to keep everything level, is because last year it did drop.
Because a couple years ago it went...
And, and so, and instead of spending it last year, this year it's going to go up a little bit higher, because last year, you know, I want to say it was like $80 or something.
But I also, just like I...
Yeah, $80.
So is that the, is that the, um...
Right, but, you know, if you take that as, you know, two and a half percent, if it had stated 80.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So it's going to be a bigger hit if it went down last year.
Right. And the other piece of that is, I did also throw out some numbers. One thing to look at is, you know, what other people in, in neighboring communities are paying. And really, based on the numbers that I'm seeing, we're not out of line.
No, we're not. I don't think we are.
No, I don't think we are, because we have the, we have the malls, we have the commercial base.
And also what services the town wants. That's the biggest thing, is unfortunately, things are costly.
So how do you guys feel about asking, sorry, June, June or Dennis to generate a line item cost for each, each article that has a cost to it? And presenting that at the meeting at the S T M?
That would be finance.
Finance committee. Yeah, that'd be finance.
Yeah, I was going to say, I wouldn't put it in here to Dennis.
I think you should talk to finance committee about that.
I mean, because it was nice, when Buzz did the CPA, he went, he gave wonderful examples. If your house is, and then it minus this, it's going to equal the... Well, but people got an idea of, oh, it's going to go $20 bucks, oh, it's going to go at $50 bucks, you know, to your point. Yeah, for every, we're going to, you know, raise and appropriate 190,000, we're going to raise an appropriate 700,000. At the end of the day, people aren't thinking, I wonder how much that is on my taxes, until they get their bill and go charge down to the office, yeah.
Right, and they're going to pay, you know, whoever...
Correct, right, when they're all the ones that sat there and went...
I would also say, though, after, after spending the last few days running these calculations, it's not as simple as it seems. I know it seems like a very straightforward cut, you know, but go talk to Molly, it's not anymore.
It's not as easy.
Yeah, spend some, spend some time with Molly and, and, yeah, it's more complicated than it seems.
One more question?
Question, because I was noticing a lot of, it was an interesting meeting, and that's why I stuck around, you had a lot of interesting topics, and many of the issues you're dealing with are HR related, whether it's health insurance, or issues with people's comp, and how people are paid, things like that. We talked once before about PEO.
I have an email from you, but I also, we're currently in the process of applying for a best practices grant to cover two very significant HR pieces.
Oh.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I think it'd be really helpful, though, if you at least met with someone from PEO, because it seems like it would make your jobs way easier. It would help you out with a lot of these issues.
I'm sorry, meet with...
You need to do a bunch of research on...
A personal employer organization, so they come in, they're almost like, they're a third party, that you can come in, they can do your payroll, they can do all your HR. I mean, there's one up in, oh, Lowell, I think, Waltham, Insperity. They're a PEO, so... Yeah.
But the thing is, they, they buy on health insurance, which is just such a pain, because, you know, you're talking about getting quotes. What's going to happen is, you're going to get five quotes, and they're all going to be different.
Yeah.
And the level of complexity with these things, of all the different details of what, what you're offering, is so tough, that it's just, it's miserable trying to figure it out.
You almost have to have apples to apples.
Right, and then you're a small, you know, even though you got a bunch of employees, you're still small potatoes, right? So the nice thing about PEOs is they aggregate a lot of employees.
Oh, I should have Claire on there, too, shouldn't I?
Tens of thousands sometimes, and they, and they've got a whole team of people working on negotiating every year. And you get to ride along with that. And they support all the employees by giving them all the benefits information they need. Which is something I think is worth looking at. Because even bringing a town administrator in, a bulk of the job is HR, they're not going to do it as well as professionals.
We actually, when we were, they were going through the study, they talked about how a huge percentage, normally you would hire for HR when you're hiring the town administrator, that would be their primary sort of background, because it is such a huge part of the job.
Right, and there's different parts of HR, and it's hard to get one person in for the cover.
Definitely.
Like even today, you talked about comp and benefits, issues with health insurance, things like that, and you've got, or employee relation, organization related things that are problems, and they're totally different.
And I did just send that over to, your email over to Mary and Chris and Peg for the information for PEO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Now, can we adjourn?
Yep, you got to make the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.